Well, it's six thirty, so we're going to start. We have a really, really packed agenda, a lot of good stuff to be done. So we're going to get this underway immediately. I'd like to call to order this joint work session with the Shenandoah County School Board and the supervisors and welcome those folks here. I would like to, at this point, call the meeting to order and ask for the approval of the agenda from the school board. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda from members of the school?
I'm going to approve the agenda as presented.
One second.
Thank you. Ms. Shaw, and this is, if I have to do more, will you not do your own? Is there any discussion? Not those in favor of approval of the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion to approve the agenda as presented has passed. And now, Chairman, I know your name, Dennis, if you can call your, thank you, Dennis.
I'll call the board to, by the way, to make the order. Now, on behalf of board, thank you for hosting us, giving us support to it, and looking at the document. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I want to say, I'm also fully of Shenandoah County Schools.
He's always kind of reminding me of that.
It's kind of good of you.
Is there anything for the business that you have to do with your folks' work? All right, so we're on our way. We're going to offer several briefings to the board of supervisors. I think there are, I think, two or three items that we'll be discussing, right? And I'll call on our superintendent to choreograph this presentation. You're on it?
Thank you. So the very first presentation is going to be a review of our accreditation status of our schools, and I want to introduce Mr. Jennifer Proctor and Mr. Chad Hensley, who will lead us through our accreditation and some great news.
Good evening. Jennifer and I both like to say thank you for letting us share this information with you tonight. We have a lot of information that we're trying to condense down in a very short amount of time, so we're going to try to make it as concise as we possibly can, but also as informative as we can. So tonight, we want to go over, we want to do the overview of how we did performance-wise this past school year, and then we want to talk just a little bit about the changes coming up, so you understand that the teachers, what they're going through at their level, they have a lot of changes going on right now in education. I think it's important for us to share that out. So I'd like to start. Every year, we show where we rank within the school divisions in the state of Virginia. This is from 2017, where we were 102, and we dropped down in 2018 to 110th. This past year, we jumped up to 56, which is awesome, and that work is solely primarily due to our teachers every day, working with their principals at the school and working with each other to make sure that they're giving our children everything that they need to be successful on the Standards of Learning test. So a huge thank you for the work they put in. There's a lot of work that people do not see, that they put in every day. It's long, it's hard, and they do it with a smile on their face every day, and we really appreciate that. So we're excited to say that we ranked 56, and that's awesome. We're in the top quarter now, so. This chart here, I know it's hard to read, but we just want to share. This is SOL versus poverty rate. So our poverty over here, you can't see, was in, not in yellow. We're in between 30 and 40%. In 2023, our poverty rate went up a little over, oh, sorry, oops, wrong one, over 40% on this side, but we increased. We went above the trend line. So lots of good things happened in the classroom in Shenandoah, and that's because of our teachers. They're working really hard, and we're really proud of them.
Okay, we're going to start with the elementary this evening, and this is our longitudinal data. It's for the past three years. You can see our first slide on the left is Ashby Lee, Sandy Hook in the middle, and WW Robinson on the end. We'll go through some more details, but I just want to show that we've pretty much kind of stayed steady. Yeah, we've pretty much stayed steady where we were at last year. We've had a little bit of dip here at Ashby Lee. We don't have science scores because of the fifth grade moving back to Ashby Lee. They were at North Fork, so this will be the first year that we have science scores to look at. Previously, that fifth grade science was at North Fork. Sandy Hook, their scores have pretty much stayed the same. And then WW Robinson, they actually went up a little bit in English, stayed about the same in math, history, and then also went up in science. And then some more detail. This was our accreditation report that we had last year compared to this year. This is Ashby Lee. As you can see, our students with disabilities is our area of concern for English, and it continued to be a concern. And then, of course, our science was low at Ashby Lee this past year. Again, they didn't have scores previously to look at. This is Sandy Hook. Their chronic absenteeism went from yellow to green. Let me go back one. As you can see, Ashby Lee also did that with their chronic absenteeism. Students with disabilities still seems to be an area of concern in English at Sandy Hook. And then WW Robinson, so their students with disabilities flip-flopped a little bit. It was an issue last year in math, and this year it's an issue in English, and our chronic absenteeism also went up, so.
At the middle school level, one thing that I would like to point out is the history and science work that our teachers worked extremely hard over last summer. Going into the last school year, they got together throughout the two days during the summer, they worked on their curriculum, worked on the materials that they were putting in front of students. They also met throughout the year. They did that virtually, so they didn't have to always travel to a central location. We tried to make that as easy as we could on our teachers, so that they have to run up and down interstate to get to a meeting place. They worked extremely hard. So if you look at our, in our middle schools, you can see where the science increased, history. For North Fork, you see it wasn't there because it was at the high school, but compared to the high school rate, that's a huge increase, too. We would have put the eighth grade beside it. Over here, science at Peter Mullenberg, there was a huge increase. Oh, I keep going there, Jennifer. History also went up, so the areas that they were working hard on, we're seeing it in our data. And then also at Signal Knob, the same things in science and history. But across the board, you can see that in all the subjects, they were, they were gaining ground. All of our schools from elementary to high school also worked very hard on the chronic absenteeism, and that shows in our data. If you look at any of our data, we have a huge decrease, which we won. So proud of our schools for the work that they're doing that. That's not just your principals trying to get kids in school, that's your teachers developing relationships with children, bringing them to the school. So at the middle school level, North Fork, you're going to see in 2022, 23, you went all green. That's the goal. Yellow says you need a little bit of work, red saying, whoa, something's going wrong here, we need to really take a focus area. So you can see that North Fork made a jump. On all of the ones for the secondary level, where we are in yellow, it's students with disabilities, so we have to take a look at what are we going to do differently there to help our students with disabilities. Peter Mullenberg, you can see that they had a lot of yellows and reds. They had one green previous year, and now they only have one yellow moving forward, which is in science. And the reason why they had that in science is they didn't meet the overall pass rate in science, but they made a huge gain in science. It was a great gain in science that they made. Signal Knob, the same way, they had a lot of yellow and some red in there. They went to all green, so you can see lots of great work happening at the school. So high schools, you're going to see the same thing. You're going to see a lot of growth across. The one area that we do know that we need to work at the high school level still is in our history and our science area. We know that. That's something that we're focusing on. So we look at data from our SOL tests and see what, what are our kids do well on, what are they not doing well on, and then what type of material are we putting in front of them. So our teachers are doing a great job looking at that, so we're anticipating that to come up also this coming year. So across the board, all three schools doing really well, and if you would see the very tiny pieces down here, that's their dropout rates. We have a very low dropout rate for our high schools. We're really high with that, so it's awesome. And then also, their chronic absenteeism also increased a lot. Well, decreased, still good. So this is Central High School. So from 22, 23, you see they had some yellows and reds that they're all green. At Stonewall Jackson High School, there were some yellows, they're all green. And at Strasburg, we had a red and a yellow, they're all green except for the career, college career and readiness, and we got caught with a couple of students. And when we started looking through the data, there were some of our students that graduated early that we didn't have some things that they needed, and that caught us, and we're a little low, but we're very hyper-focused. Amy Miller does a great job of tracking all of our seniors that comes out of the senior cohort, so she tracks all of our seniors, and she keeps it on a spreadsheet for all of our schools, so they can see exactly what every student needs as a senior to make sure they're hitting the benchmarks.
Okay, so many of you maybe have heard that accreditation is changing for next year, and so this is the framework that the Department of Education has put out. There are two sides. The left-hand side is really about student achievement, and the right-hand side is really about, is the school board office and the school board doing what they need to do to ensure that we have schools and they have the right things in the right place, like personnel and things like that. We'll explain that a little more in detail as we go. But I'm going to start talking about with on the left, which is about student achievement. So as you've heard us talk in the past, we've talked about schools being accredited or accredited with conditions. Well, moving forward after this year, our students will be ranked either distinguished, on track, off track, or need intensive support. Each school will get an overall number, and there's all kinds of things that are going to go into giving us that number, but they will get a number. For example, an 81 for a school would mean that they're on track, and so you can see the different points there. And so moving forward, we won't hear things like accredited or accredited with conditions. We'll be using these, this terminology to talk about where our schools are at. So what goes into figuring out what our schools need to do? Well, that's not very easy either. They like to make things complicated. So as you can see, each level has a little bit different caveat. Elementary, mastery is 65%, growth is 25, readiness is 10. Middle school, mastery is 60%, growth is 20, and readiness is 20. And then high school, mastery is 50, readiness is 35, and graduation is 15. And so let's go a little deeper and see what that means. So first off, I want to talk about what a pass is. So in the past, when a student passed an SOL test with a 400, that was counted as a pass. Now, it will be a little more complicated than that. As you can see, at elementary grades and middle school grades, well, all the way, well, no, three through eight, advanced students, so if you got a 500 or above, you'll get a point, 1.25 for that pass. If it's a 400 to a 500, you'll get a one point. If it's below that, if it's a fail, basic, you'll get .75, and it's below basic, you'll get .25. So all of that will go together to make a mastery score. So like I said, it's nothing that's nice and easy. So when we used to talk about 75% of our kids passed the English SOL, we won't be able to do that anymore. Now, it will really be based on how each student scored on that test. And then VAP students, which are special ed students, which is only 1% of our students that participate in VAP, so we're talking about our really low, extremely low students, they do a VAP, and you'll see that there's only three areas there, advanced, proficient, and does not meet. And so they get 1.25, 1, or 1.75. So all of that will be calculated. And Amanda Bold, who is our testing coordinator, she's already been working on this preliminary data. She already has a spreadsheet that we can put the data in, and so we'll be able to figure these things out. So elementary, what goes into mastery? This is really based on our reading SOL scores, our math SOL scores, our science SOL scores. So I don't know if you can see, because it's kind of small, but right here, you can see that our reading is going to be 22.5, math will be 22.5%, and science will be 10%. And then also, our EL students will be 10%. And that is, if you've ever heard us talk about our EL students, they take what's called an access test, and that assesses their language acquisition. And so that, those scores will now also go into our mastery, which has never been part of our accreditation before. So that's new. Then we will also have growth, which will be 25% of that score. In the past, we used to be able to say a growth counted if a student got a 350 this year, and then the next year they got a 375, that might have counted as a growth, because they made enough gains from the one year to the next year that it counted as a point. Well, that's not how that's calculated anymore. Now, we're going to be using a system called VIVAS. I think we have it later, what the VIVAS stands for. But that program will, and it's a complicated program, but basically what it will do is compare each one of our students' growth compared to other students nationally across the U.S. Did they make the same amount of growth that we would expect all students, for example, in third grade to make by the end of third grade? So that will be how we calculate growth now, so no more of the just making better test scores. Will that count? And then readiness for this coming year will just be based on chronic absenteeism, but after this year, it will be chronic absenteeism and then the five Cs, performance task. We don't have information yet about what that looks like. The state's in the process of developing that, so we don't, so stay tuned for more information. We don't have all of that. Okay, so that's elementary. Then middle school gets to use a different parameter.
So starting out with mastery, it's pretty much the same as far as the reading, math, science, and also our English language students. It's a different percentage that you'll see as we go through these slides. They change a little bit. The expected growth, one thing that we learned just recently, and that we're going to need to learn more about with the expected growth, is that 50% of our students will automatically be disqualified out of it. That was a statement that was made, so we have to look into that more and say, what does that really mean? How's that play out? Why, why is 50% going to be taken out right from the top? And then the readiness, you can see the chronic absenteeism, advanced coursework, so the algebra one in the middle school, that's one that they've given right now. They're going to be given more, they haven't said yet. There's some history courses that's going to also count, but we haven't received anything definitely what it is. So all this is new, it's coming out. As we speak, we get things every day about it. And then they do the performance task also, and that's going to be worked on during the first year. So we don't know what that looks like, but they're going to be working on that, so it'll be ready for the next school year. And that readiness score gets offset because of that. Then the year one absenteeism, advanced coursework, they're 10% for each one of those because of that. At the high school level, same thing in mastery, it's your English, math, science, and EL, different percentages there with the 15 and 10 and 10. The readiness changes a little bit because it goes into a six-year extended graduation rate with applied studies, with 5%, and then it goes into Ready for Life, three E's framework, 25%. So that's new. That's new for all of us. A while ago, you saw the CCCRI that we've always followed, so now it's going to be something a little bit different, and I'll show you what that is. And then the very last thing, the 15% is about graduation, and that's the federal graduation indicator for that four-year cohort. So when you enter ninth grade and start taking classes, that becomes your cohort. So that's your, that's your on-time cohort to graduate. If you don't do it in the four years, obviously you're behind. So the three Es, that's new. So a sneak peek at that, it's all about points again. It's, it's about scores that you get on things. So it goes through three categories. It goes through enrollment, employment, and then enlistment, which is new. So you can see that you earn different points with enrollment. Like if you get an associate's degree, it's 1.25 points for that student. So everybody's going to have a different point system. If you went the CT completer route, which is Mr. Lynn's part, that, that's going to be in a different category, and you can see it's a different point there. So if you're a completer and you did a high-demand workforce field, you're going to get one point. So different points for different categories, which makes it interesting, so how that all plays out. What's very important about that, you'll hear Mr. Lynn talk about all the time, about high-demand occupations, and he has that research, and we're putting in, in our courses, he's looking for that, because he's looking to the future to get that in. So it's going to be about high, high-demand courses. And then enlistment, so you're ASVAB. So I would suspect a lot more students may be taking ASVAB in the future, because that's going to count. So I could see that actually being something for our students that they would take in the future. The Virginia accreditation system, so Jennifer said a while ago, there's two sides of that house. There's one with all the academic stuff, and there's one with the accreditation side. That accreditation side is all administrative things. Are you following the codes? Are you following the regulations that are put in place? And on here, we have certain things like student services, your staffing levels, how many people you have in by level, by student numbers, that's included in there. Also, your requirements for graduation, things with community relations, and then just the philosophy and goals and objectives of public education in general, are you following those things? So there's lots of regulations and codes out there that we have to follow, and that's to follow up, are you actually doing it? And right now, Dr. Kindgardner signs off on a lot of those things to make sure that we're actually doing those things.
Okay, so amongst all of the accreditation changes, this year, we also have new SOLs. Typically, SOLs come in a, new SOLs come in a staggered phase in, and it's about every five years. Well, this year, we have new English standards and new math standards. The other thing that usually happens is when we get new standards, we usually have what we call a crosswalk year. So we'll get the new English standards, and then the next year, we'll have a crosswalk year, and there'll be a document that says, here's how the old and the new combine together so that you make sure you're still teaching the old, but starting to lean into the new. Well, that's no longer in place. We do not have a crosswalk year. So last year, they voted the new SOLs, actually this past spring, and they are in place this fall. We started with the new SOLs. However, if you're high school, you don't have that luxury, because we're on semesters. So first semester, English teachers are teaching 2017 writing, 2018 English, and then in the spring, they'll move to the 2024 English. So they'll be teaching three different sets of standards this year. Also new is the integrated reading and writing test, and that happens in fifth grade and eighth grade. We did a trial run of that last year. We still don't have a cut score for what that means yet, but all of the students, when they took the fifth grade reading, they took a fifth grade reading and writing test, and that was where they got a reading prompt, and instead of having multiple choice answers, they had to actually do a writing response to the questions, which is different. Also new this year is the Virginia Literacy Act. That required a lot of PD for our teachers. They're currently working on that, but that changed also some of the requirements for English. So in the past, we adopted English curriculum, but sometimes you might have a teacher that comes in with a lot of years of experience, and they have all of this knowledge, and then you have a textbook, and they might say, well, I feel like I know how to teach this without using the textbook. Well, that is no longer allowed. Now, the VLA, the Virginia Literacy Act, says you must use the adopted curriculum for English language arts, and they call it high-quality instructional material. So we don't have a choice. So that also has been hard for our teachers, because they felt like they had a little more autonomy, and now we've taken, the state has kind of taken some of that away and said, so in Shenandoah County, we use HMH into reading, that's your program, that's what you will use. At middle school, we use StudySync, that's your program, that's what you will use. And this applies K through eight. And then this year, we also, if any of you have had children go through the system in the last 20 years, you probably remember your kids taking a PALS test, and it was a literacy test. And so this year, we've transitioned to vowels, which aligns more to the science of reading, and it's more phonics and phonemic and decoding and encoding, and not to get into all the literacy stuff, but it's much more fine-grained about what kids need, and it more aligns more to how we're teaching today. And so that test has also been new for our teachers this year, and it's taken them a lot, while to get used to giving that test. It takes them a little bit longer than what they're used to. They had PALS down really quick, and they could administer it to a kid and be done pretty quickly. And some students, it's taking over an hour to get all of the components done. And so that's been an adjustment for our teachers. And so when you hear teachers saying, there's just a lot, especially for elementary teachers, they're not kidding, there's a lot of changes happening right now with the new SOLs, the new literacy requirements, the new vowels testing, and so we are trying to support them as best we can. The calendar change has been huge in helping them. Today, they were able actually to work on some of the vowels, excuse me, some of the Literacy Act, because they have a Canvas course they have to do, so they were able to work on that today, and that was very helpful. Anything else I'm missing on that, Chad? Okay.
So I think something important to point out, that she spoke about the core materials that you have to use. The state has to vet that and say, these are the materials that you can adopt as a core. So there are some divisions out there that, when they made that change, they had adopted something that's not on that list. Now they have to go back and adopt something different. So that's a financial burden also. We were very fortunate in the things that we adopted in our English adoption that we did a few years ago, that they're actually on the list. So we're very fortunate with that, that we don't have to go back and redo it. The other thing important to mention is that she said it's a lot. Understand that our elementary level is a really a lot, lot, because science, math, history, if you think of an elementary teacher, they teach it all, most of them. So they're getting hit with them all. So in that realm, it is a lot. So when you hear people talking about a lot, that's one of the reasons, because all those standards are hitting that one teacher. So not just like in secondary, you may teach math, the math standards are hitting you, they're getting all the standards hitting them at one time. So math, I know that you know about NAEP, you've heard NAEP a lot, you hear a lot from our governor talking about those scores. When they revisited standards, they are talking about these standards being the best in class for math, and what they're really aligned to, getting more similar to that NAEP, they're getting more towards the common core than being those standalone SOLs that the Commonwealth had before, so it has that slant, you can see more of that inside of those standards. Also, there's no crosswalk here. Here's the standards, we start next year. So that's important to note, that it's this year that it actually went in place. So for our high school, they're going to teach the old standards, the 2016 standards, until December. And at December, they got to flip over, and they're going to teach the 23 standards for the remainder of the year. So it's a huge switch for those teachers, too, because they're having to teach two different standards also during the year. Also, there's a huge increase on use of manipulatives in that, so that comes at a cost, but Maggie Gavello, our math specialist, curriculum specialist, she's been purchasing manipulists for the last two years. She's been working with us to get these, so this is something we've been forward-thinking on, and we have those going in the classrooms already, so we feel very fortunate there. The other thing that they're bringing in in math is really analyzing data from K to 12th grade. They're bringing data into that, into their standards and actually using data.
So history and social sciences also was adopted new last year, in 2023. They did give us time, though, to implement these, and so those will begin next year and be tested for the first time next year. So all of our teachers will be transitioning to new history SOLs next year. And then science, also, they're, they're up for renew, and they'll be reviewing the standards next year, in 2025, will get the first look at those standards. It looks like they'll be coming out sometime in October for us to get that first look. But then they're anticipating we'll implement 25, 26, so it looks like they'll have a double whammy again with the history and the science.
The other thing that's coming is computer science standards, and they're standalone standards that have to be taught. And they're coming in, they're going to be grade level specific, so all the grade levels for K-8. They are working with Code Virginia to help provide PD, so I know Tim with us works with Code Virginia a lot, to get this in place, to help get this going. Tim oversees a lot of this in our division. So those standards, they're going to be fully functioning 25, 26. So as you can see, it's pretty much a revamp of everything within a couple of years that our teachers are having to make a lot of adjustments to. So a lot of materials they have don't match the new standards, so now they're having to get new things, they're having to do different things. So that's, that's where, when you hear that, there's a lot going on, there is a lot going on, and we recognize that.
So just to recap some of the changes, I talked about the VLA and the requirements at our teachers. That PD is ranging from six to 18 hours, depending on your sort That PD is ranging from six to 18 hours, depending on your certification. So just to recap that. Also, a big change this year is for our English language learners. So in the past, if we had a new EL student, they had 11 semesters before their SOL score would count. So let's say a new student came to us in third grade. They had 11 semesters before that SOL score would go into the pot to count against the school. Now, they have three semesters. So if they come to us in third grade, well, by the end of fourth grade, their score is going to count. So that's not a lot of time for our students to acquire English, and I believe that's going to have an impact on our schools pretty big. Also, the group, the minimum student group size is 15. If you remember, we used to talk about group sizes, originally, it was 50. Then it moved to 30, and now it's at 15. So the group size has also changed. So like, that could impact Sandy Hook, where they have a lower EL population before. They might not have had to worry about that subgroup counting against them, whereas this year, that 15 will impact them, and that will be a subgroup that will show up. And then also, just to say again, that the growth will be calculated differently, and that will be through VBOSS, and that stands for Virginia's Visualization and Analytics Solution. Questions?
It's a lot. So we could spend eight hours on that.
Yes.
The English language learners, is that going to be for all schools, or elementary school?
All schools, yes.
And our subgroups are English learners, students with disabilities.
Disadvantaged, black, white, Asian, yeah, multiple races. So also, just to keep in mind, for our EL students, at the high school level, that's always been an issue because they had to get verified credits. So if a student moved here in high school, they've always had that hurdle to overcome pretty quickly, learning English. It'll be a difference, though, for our middle and elementary schools. At high school, we work with them, we have a pathway for our EL students so that we know, okay, you don't know English, so let's put you in some of these classes where we can help you acquire some English skills before we start putting in you, putting you in those classes that will require an SOL test. And like Algebra I is usually one they're pretty successful in because, you know, numbers are numbers. Not to say there isn't reading involved, but we also can give accommodations, like they're allowed to have a Spanish-English dictionary, or they can get a read aloud application. So different things to help them, but we strategically schedule our EL kids. Whereas the elementary, middle, we don't have that luxury. Our core sixth grade, this is what we take in sixth grade, and that requires them to take an English and a math, and depending on the grade level, it might be a science or a history.
I wanted to say that if you think you're bringing from firehogs or it's not just the board supervisors who is wondering about this. This is complicated stuff. Just happened to be a chance to talk to Governor Young. I asked him about, this is, this is complex. And he said, the most difficult thing about our political system is having a governor for four years because by the time you have all your folks in seats, two and a half years are over. And then you're looking at a year and a half before your act. And so if it feels like we're seeing a lot of changes at once, and we are, they're, they're coming with a philosophy which I would just describe as quickly as I can. We all criticize the SOLs because it was like a one-trick pony, right? You made me the pastor, you failed. It was the best we could kind of do to at least have some degree of objective measure. This is an attempt to look at the whole academic student in various realms, trying to stay away from just as subjective, being objective, but going into different categories and ways of measuring those, those measurements of effectiveness. And it's, it's, it's going to be not only a challenge for y'all to do, but it's going to be a challenge for them to be able to quantify and qualify what, what those mean. So it's, it is, you said it before, I mean, the teachers are going to have a real challenge here, and then the staff who supervise them. So it's, it's going to be the ground running and trying to do it. But it is, if you will, a heroic effort to find a way past this simple SOL. We're, we're not out of it with standards. One thing that Sharon Morris asked me to add is about kind of getting those slides. They're impossible for us to re-engage, they're even more possible to understand. So if we could get a slide deck of these things that is discernible for research for those guys and for us to have, I think that would be helpful. Not that I'd understand it any better, but, but y'all need to and will. And so anyway, I just think that's an indication of what I think the administration trying to be a little bit more robust and comprehensive, if you will, to do some. You know, it's a bit of a more than chief, but I think we're going to have to be patient with our students, teachers, and the system and so on.
If I could, I just want to caveat that with a thank you. I mean, I'm on my way out, but I recognize we had, we got rid of 50s in the classroom. So we brought that bottom level up. You know, there was no padding the achievement with low, with low, you know, points. You brought that up. Seven of our buildings had new administrators in them, which is huge. And we came in on a year where Fed had an audit, and Joan Stratton has been working her butt off to correct what's been going on. And it's just a testament to have that kind of a jump with everything that happened in the past year, and you all still came through the finish line looking at you. So thank you. I mean, it's, that's a big deal. 56 is a huge deal. And it means that leadership is working and doing what it's supposed to. And it's support from, you know, to our, to our staff. I still think we ought to do a board aid, but you know, whatever. But you know, this, I'm not, I'm not, I mean, this is daunting. It is. I'm not unhappy with it. I mean, I think there's some good things there. But I have the utmost, you know, faith that the two of you especially, because you all oversee a lot of this, and I know for certain you do, that you're, where you need to be, and that you're the right people for what you do. So I thank you.
Thank you.
I have two questions. One, this to this, this thing. Is this a good change in what we're doing? Or is it one that has been dictated and you have to do, you have a choice?
So I think with all changes, changes are hard, right? But I think that it's the mind frame that we take with that. So I'm, I'm going to say the change is good because it makes us look at things differently, and it makes us approach things differently, just from the EL side. Making sure that we're putting resources in the right place early and making sure that we're being consistent. It's the same way with all the students across the board, and being more hands-on by students. And I think that's what this does, is that it doesn't allow you just to put people into a group. I have to know Jamie, and I have to know what she needs to get her, everything she needs to accomplish that. So I think that's the good part of it. The, the bad part is that it's all happening at one time, right? And that's the hard part. But just in education, we'll figure it out. We'll, we'll get it done.
Will the teachers wear a plan? Do they feel the same way?
So I think our teachers.
People say to say no.
Yeah, anytime, like I said earlier, anytime with change, no. Because it's easier to keep doing the things that we're doing. Because in a lot of this, I have to do what I, what I was doing, but oh, by the way, I have to change. Or if I would have a course right now that was a full-year course for some reason, I would be teaching maybe one that's a semester course on one standards and teaching a different set of standards for the full year. So that's the part that gets hard for them. So I can understand, like, it's hard to change in the middle of the year and switch everything you're doing. So yeah, I can see why they don't like it.
But our administrators are handling that, and they're working with the teachers to figure out how to support them so that they don't feel like they're out there floundering on their own. We try to make sure everybody feels supported.
With any change, there's a lot of tension. It sounds, what I could tell, that you're going to have a lot of changes. It's going to take a lot of education, a lot of education, not only what else, but when you looked at this change, was the change included in your 24, 25 budget? Did it change drastically in your next budget? Is this going to impact it? In what way will it impact it? Will it impact it with additional training for teachers? Will it impact additional employees? Will it impact the class size? That I would anticipate as a member of additional costs in the school budget just for this change? Or is this just something you'll implement and has no impact in the budget?
So one place that it does have an impact is within binders' core materials. But we, over the past three years, have been very fiscally responsible of how we're using money that was coming in from the state, that we have been planning and using that money and holdover money so that when the math gets ready to be adopted, that we'll have more money than what's in our budget, actually, because we have that in our special fund that we can use. So we've, we've been looking ahead. We know things, we knew things were coming, so we started planning for it. So certain things like that, we can plan for.
We had the All-in-Virginia money as well that came out this year. So we were able to use that, those funds to purchase some of our literacy materials that we needed, which we're in the process of doing now. But yeah, so we had that. And then we also had CARES money that we were using also as we looked long-term to be able to purchase things.
So I'll take that as, didn't have any impact here, but?
No, it, it did have an impact to our school calendar, and we added five additional. And I think you guys said that during your presentation, we added five additional days for teacher professional development so they would have the time to do what they needed to do to be able to implement classroom for teachers.
I will say that I don't know the numbers off the top of my head, but the elementary is seeing a growth come back from private school to public school. And so because of that, some of our classes, for example, at Ashby Lee, we added another class after the start of the year because our numbers were too high, because we still have to stay below 23 in our K through three classrooms. So we have had to add some classrooms over the last couple of years, which is a good problem to have, but.
Not because of the change, but?
No, I mean, we could say maybe, but not sure.
So bottom line, who benefits most from this change? Is it the student?
It'll be the student who benefits. Because the curriculum's going to be more rigorous, so the students will benefit. And the reality is, we want our kids to be exposed to rigorous curriculum so that, you know, whenever they graduate high school, they're ready to do whatever it is they want to do, whether it's go on to a four-year college, go to the workforce, military, whatever, they'll be prepared. And that's what we want, what to do, so prepare now.
I'm going to comment on two things. Sharon Morris has a question?
I want to echo Bradley's comment. I think, you know, y'all have been committed for the tremendous success you've had. But if you would have our current staffs and would have the new rules, new regulations, the new game account, and if that was an overlay on what we have now, where are your biggest concerns?
Students with disabilities.
Sir?
Students with disabilities.
Disabilities, okay. Thank you.
It's a hard, it's a hard place to sit.
Yes. Teacher shortage, and on top of it, the diverse needs of students with disabilities. Because no student with a disability is exactly the same.
Are we getting more qualified candidates for the Fed programs here lately or recently?
No. And I think that's across.
That's everywhere.
It's everywhere. It's not just us. Fed is hard for everyone.
I think Ms. Hodges' presentation a couple of weeks ago for, there's a 23% staff driver rate across the nation, so.
And what I'm seeing, this is not going to help the shortage at all, would you agree?
I think it depends. It depends on the teacher's mindset. You know, if a teacher comes in with a negative mindset and doesn't want to change, doesn't want to embrace the new ideas, that could be a hurdle for them. But so far, I have to say, at the elementary level, our teachers have embraced it. They've had struggles, don't, don't get me wrong, but they've, I think, have embraced this way of teaching because this isn't something we just started this year. Allison Bossy, who's our English curriculum person, she has been working with us for the last two years to get us on this track. We saw it coming, and so it's not like we just ripped the Band-Aid off this year. We, we've been working towards this, so.
The one thing I want to make clear is that we have great, we have a great staff across the board, from elementary to high school. We have great teachers. We have teachers that want the best for our children. And, and that's what, that's what you ask for, people that care every day to build those relationships with children and be able to move them from where they are to where they need to be. We're lucky to have a county that we have. We're lucky to have the staff that we have here right now. And we, we appreciate that. And sometimes, you know, you can't go around and tell them enough how much you appreciate it. But I think when you see the scores that we did this past year, that's, that's them. That's our teachers and our administrators in the schools. That's the boots on the ground that's making that happen.
I also say that vision comes from the top. And one of the things that Superintendent Bruce said when she got here was, we have to raise expectations because we've been living under a system that lowered expectations. And when that message, that feeling percolates that, it ennobles and enables professionals to be able to do that. And that's next teacher. You just love it when you've got a chance to try to squeeze a little bit more at a student and challenge yourself as a professional in the process. I think this is an opportunity to do that. Any other questions?
I can add one more. I know you've had a poor little time keeping personnel, you know, getting, getting up and stuff. It's going to take a toll on teachers. I mean, this is, and I would say, if you teach in Pennsylvania or Augusta or anywhere in Virginia, you have to deal with the same issues. But the teachers that are maybe within four or five figures are retiring. Do you see them being frustrated, saying, I'm going to hang it up early because I don't want to go through this? Is that an issue that you are, I just see a tremendous stress on the teachers.
I would agree that some of them have boys being overwhelmed, but they're not retiring early.
That's good.
I just want to add to that, though. Our principals work really well with our teachers, and, you know, it's real, we hear the negatives a lot. We hear, you know, of the people that are overwhelmed. But I often say to teachers, have you talked to your principal? Because nine times out of 10, if it's something that we can do for them, we do it. It's very seldom do we say no, unless it's like out of our control or is like way too expensive and we can't afford it. But other than that, we usually find a way to help support our teachers. You know, if they need support in some way, you know, whether it's observing another teacher, whether it's getting extra hands in the classroom, we always try and do that. So I think that helps with that, what you're talking about. Principals go out of their way because they want their teachers to stay. They want them to be happy.
Jennifer Ch, thank you very much for the presentation. Your presentation. Dr. Shepherd?
Yes, thank you. So our next presentation is going to be about, about our facilities plan and then also a discussion on. a discussion on Triple Tech. So over the last couple of months, we have had a lot of conversations about Triple Tech and the number of classes that we offer and the number of students who are having to turn away. So I'm going to turn it over to Bud Lin to give a few, you know, just a couple minutes on the background and then RRNM, the architect who has got our facilities plan, will start talking about what they found.
Thanks, Dr. Shepherd. It's absolutely our pleasure, first of all, to host you guys here at Triple Tech. You got to see a little bit of our students in action today, thanks to Chef Cross who stayed with us to join us and what a great meal that they prepared today. So we're very appreciative of them. Thank you, Chef. And we'll tell your kids again tomorrow how much we appreciate them. But we are off to an amazing start here at Triple. Classes are full for the most part. You walk up and down this hall and every seat's almost full. So we're very excited about that. Along those lines, you know, we've had to interview about nine programs had to interview this year because we're capped at 20 for a lot of our classes or however many booths or, or stations we have. That's due to OSHA regulations. So with all that being said, even though we're at, we're at record enrollment, we still had to turn away almost 70 students this year. 70 students that wanted to come to Triplet and we just didn't have the space for them. So I wish I could say, hey, it's just in electricity that we had to turn kids away, but it's in culinary that we had to turn away. It's in auto tech. It's in cosmetology. It's in nurse aid. We go on and on. It's in HVAC that we just started. We had to turn kids away. So it's across the board. It's in nine different programs where we had to turn kids away. And that breaks my heart that we had to do that because what we're seeing more so than ever is that kids that are coming here, they're getting the training, they're going out into the workforce, like Mr. Anzley was saying, in those high demand, high wage jobs, and they're doing well for themselves. We were talking about earlier over here that we have our signing day and, you know, we, we signed 28 students going off into the workforce last year and that changed the morning up. We had more businesses that we didn't know were coming that ended up coming and it worked out. It was a beautiful thing and kids are making really good money after graduating from Triple Tech. But also part of the reason why we're here is what do we do next? Where do we go? We have 70 kids that we had to turn away. Man, what would we do? What could we do with 70 slots? And so right now, we've got a couple of things going on. I am looking at where are the high demand jobs? Where are the high demand wages? Where can we go there? What is a local need that we have? You know, so that brings us to, do we talk about diesel mechanics? Do we talk about welding? But we also got to look to the future a little bit. We, where, what do we do with aviation? Do we look at pilots? Do we look at drones? What do we do with artificial intelligence and machine learning and robotics? What do we do with those things? Health sciences continues to expand, so how many more health sciences kids can we add? So there's a survey out to our students right now that I've got 1,100 responses back in grade six through 11. So I'll be analyzing that, giving that to the superintendent. Some of the preliminary results are very interesting. So we bring that in and we, we put in the programs that we currently have because we want to make sure those are still vital. Do we still have enough interest to do auto tech? Yes, we do. But also if we add auto tech, can I do diesel? Can I do welding without robbing one program to start another? If everything holds true, right now the answer to that is yes. And I go back to when we started HVAC, we truly added 30 more students to Triplet. We didn't rob from carpentry. We didn't rob from electricity. Those programs are still full. There's still, we had to interview in those programs. So we added 15 more kids in the first year. We added another 15 kids in the second year. So we did our homework. We did it right. Those jobs are in high demand and kids are wanting to get in there. Right, so when we go on and we look at what can happen next and where do we go, I think it's kind of limitless what we want to do. We can narrow that down, right? We can say, hey, this is what our kids want. And then we can look at, hey, this is where the high demand jobs are. These are where the high demand credentials are and how it plays into the overall schools' accreditation. So we can make all that work, but still at the end of the day, we're out of space. So when we look at what we have left here, it's traditional classroom space. So we think, hey, why can't you just start a welding classroom? Well, I've got an afternoon open up in early childhood. I can't do welding there, right? I've got a afternoon opening in nurse aid. I could do something in health sciences, but I can't do diesel mechanics down there. So space becomes an issue really quick. As we go through this process, it's been pretty amazing and it's been pretty fun to be a part of and kind of see where we could go and what we could do and the overall interest in Triple Tech and coming back to the trades and getting their hands dirty. I think it's just being responsible to our students and what they want. So I appreciate a couple of minutes to talk, Dr. Shepherd, and I will turn it up. Would you all mind if we stood while we presented?
If you lose your time.
Let me echo what Mr. Lanis said first. That dinner was fantastic. Thank you all so much for having us as guests and view us. That's the biggest reason why I need to stand because I can't breathe when I'm sitting down. So, and I would say to Mr. Anzley and Ms. Proctor, I thought the building code changes are something that we struggle with. It pales in comparison to what you just presented. I couldn't imagine what you will have to do as administrators and leaders, all the way down to every single teacher that has to learn that system. It makes our job of looking at a building code pretty simple. So congratulations to all of you for your success and just wish you the best at home. So I am, firstly, let me reduce. I am Chris Phillips. I'm principal architect with RRNM Architects. I direct our renovation office and with me today is Mark Probst. Mark is our deputy CEO, but also our facilities assessment expert. He has a long history of examining these facilities across the Commonwealth, even on the higher ed side as well with some of his background. So we together came to Shenandoah County many months back to respond to a request for a proposal to do a facilities conditions assessment across your entire county. And running parallel with that is a very high altitude study of Triple Tech building we're doing right now. And those two things were done simultaneously such that the conditions assessment could inform the design team on what's going on with this building as well. Because as Mr. Lanis shared, we're beyond capacity and so we're going to get into a little of that as we go through this presentation. But just a quick review of our agenda. We'll let Mark talk about the team's work for the FCA's and then we'll jump into Triple Tech at a very high altitude macro level feasibility study.
So it's like what we want to do is provide a brief overview of the purpose and process you likes, conducting the assessments, then the data collected, and then run through the conclusions of the findings based on the data that we collected. So the overall purpose of an assessment is to document the present condition of each respective school or building assessed to assist with requirements to address or prioritize efficiencies, upgrades, renovations, and/or replacement. And the word present is really important here because it is a snapshot in time. So it's as of a day or a period in time, it doesn't, it doesn't, you'll see it will not reflect work that's been done in the summer. We walked these schools earlier in the spring. So it's an apples to apples comparison during a snapshot. We pulled together a very highly experienced team of professionals that have done a number of assessments throughout the Commonwealth. We had a PME with Ascent Engineering, Structural Concepts with our structural engineer, Panonia Civil Engineer and Food Service Consultants who looked at the kitchens and serving areas. As I mentioned, we did site visits. We did the first three Triple Tech maintenance and transportation earlier in the process because what Chris mentioned with regard to getting the full picture of Triplet. So we did those on January 19th and then during spring break, March 28th, 29th, and April 1st, we did the other, we made nine, each of the three campuses. The areas that we assessed or building systems that we assessed included exterior site conditions. The bottom, the far right photograph is actually one of those where I know there was some work done in the summer. The tennis courts at the school, at the high school do not look like that any longer. But these were the areas, pavement, concrete, accessibility, stormwater management, and athletic facilities that we looked at on the exterior site. Exterior building envelope, everything from the masonry facade and caulking to windows, doors, frames, and painting. Interior finishes, we looked at all the flooring, walls, ceilings, as well as interior caulking, windows, doors, frames, and cabinets for your case work. ADA accessibility, looked at maneuvering clearances and accessible routes, restrooms, signage, and door hardware. Building code, safety and security, looked at passive egress, any potential trap hazards, fall protection, shower, eyewash stations. And I should say, these four photographs were four categories per assessed area are really just a representation, it's not an exhaustive list of everything we looked at. We looked at roofing systems, everything from the roofing materials, skylights, gutters, downspouts, wall flashing, coping caps. Mechanical systems, heating, cooling side, air distribution controls. Electrical systems, the distribution, fire alarm, lighting, and specialty systems, which is clocks, intercoms, access control, et cetera. Plumbing systems, looked at piping, water heaters, storm drainage fixtures, plumbing fixtures. Structurally, looked for cracking in the concrete or masonry, any steel supports on the roof, steel lintels at windows and openings. Fire protection systems, looked at fire, not only fire alarm, but fire suppression, sprinkler system, kitchen suppression. Food service, we looked at the equipment in the kitchens, walk-in coolers and freezers, the entire serving areas, as well as the location of trash disposal. And after looking at each of these assessed areas, the information gathered on site pulls into a deferred maintenance schedule. So you see each category on the left-hand side, these are all the items that were identified as deferred maintenance. It's got unit costs, quantity, et cetera. And then we looked at it over a 15-year period, so it's not based on only useful life, but also the existing condition of the systems. And then with regard to the deferred maintenance, we pulled the first three years, 24, 25, and 26, down into the green bar at the bottom of the code for the total deferred maintenance that we use to calculate a facility condition index rating. So what is a facility condition index rating? It's, it's an objective measure to evaluate the current condition of a school or building and it's typically used to evaluate against other schools. So when we looked at all the schools at one time, we're looking at where the deferred maintenance is highest, greatest versus least, school to school or building to building. And it allows for the appropriate prioritized distribution of available funding to go to each of those schools and then look at the greatest of you. This is how a facility condition index is actually evaluated or the formula for creating it. It's the total deferred maintenance, which is in that green bar, the first three years, 24, 25, and 26, over or divided by the total current school or building replacement value. And that means the exact same school, the exact same square foot, the exact same system, what it would cost in today's dollars to rebuild with exactly the same. This is a ratings matrix. I will say that if you look at the far right condition description, you'll see in fair and poor, that's where all of the school buildings, school division buildings fall in either a poor or fair rating. You can see there's significant repairs in poor, major repairs needed, regular operational and functional challenges does not meet code, building code, and then fair, minor and major repairs. I know this is very difficult to see, but you can see on the left-hand side, the school or building name, and then on the very far right, the FCI rating. The top four schools in pink are rated poor and then all the ones in orange are rated as a fair. And I think this is the most telling out of those deferred maintenance costs. The center two columns that are highlighted above in green indicate all the deferred maintenance costs per school that are attributed to plumbing, mechanical, electrical, or roofing only. Every other category combined is totaled up in the blue column. And what that really equates to is roughly 90% of the total deferred maintenance costs for the school division are related to plumbing, mechanical, electrical, and roofing. Down at the very bottom, I've broken those down 5%, so you can see that mechanical equates to about 50% of the overall school division's deferred maintenance and then 20% for roofing, 18% for electrical, and 12% for plumbing. So each of the reports that we've done is in draft format. We've had a preliminary discussion with the school division to review the draft format. We're working through a finalizing those. I said earlier that these are snapshot in time, so they do not take into consideration the work that's been done this summer. We will provide an amended FCI scoring, a rating matrix based on the work that's been done this summer, so you can kind of see it before and after. Overall, the schools are in good appearance. You can walk through this school and you can tell it looks like it's really being taken care of. The, the problem really is that the systems, the infrastructure is what is aged, what's below the concrete, what's in the walls and what's above the ceilings is what we can't see and that's what that represents at 90%. Any questions before?
I haven't answered totally deferred amount of dollar.
Roughly 90 million for the, for the 12.
That's 12, so?
Yes, sir. Including maintenance, transportation, and then triplet.
90 million.
Yes, sir.
What was that?
Sorry?
Aren't you glad you were sitting? I think we need to jump forward on secondary.
Sure, yeah, thank you. I think it was, right, you go back. Yeah, maintenance building, then Triplet, then transportation, and then Sandy Hook.
What is the number one need at Sandy Hook? If you have 1 trillion, can you recall what the number one?
I can't, but I can get it for you before I leave tonight. Great, thank you.
Those buildings don't want to really have a touch. I mean, everything else has had an addition or support done in the 90s or recent. Those top ones, we haven't, haven't touched yet. Very much hard.
And the most need 60s?
Yes, right.
We're hearing that there's issues with underground piping that we're just holding right now. So, you know, a piping system should typically fix in years. We're at low half 60.
I just came around a sheet that has facilities at a glance. It tells how many square foot, the original build date, the renovation additions, and then capacity.
Those numbers cover a 15-year period?
Yes, sir. So there's not, I mean, as you move out on the 15-year schedule, it's going to get, there's going to be fewer and fewer numbers, right? I mean, a lot of the needs are in the first five to six years and if you replace a lot of those systems right now, they're not going to reoccur again before the end of that 15 year.
And it's no replacement than repair.
Uh, it's both. It's both. I mean, you've got, you've got like flooring systems, that would be replacement. There could be, you know, caulking or something would be repaired, but it's, it's probably more so replacement than repair.
And what is the number for Triplet?
Uh, I think it's 9.3, 9.4, 9. Do you have any questions on the facilities conditions assessment? So that's a, that's a very condensed amount of information, a lot of numbers, but books of each school are being assembled that goes into greater detail about each individual part and piece. So those will be published and available to schools and as well as the facilities master plan developer. Guy, you've been making some steps and can take care of this deferred maintenance issue. So running parallel of that, and I promise, Dr. Shepherd, that I keep my feet to about an hour and a half. So I'm going to do very fast. We can use the zergs, by the way. Do you want to stand up a little bit? So running parallel of that, as I said, Mark had a very high-level expertise, expert team looking at facilities conditions. We had another team looking at this building specifically in the world greater detail about the feasibility of, well, really answering your question. Should we build new or does it make more sense to renovate and expand? Should we build new, or does it make more sense to renovate and expand? As you've heard from Mr. Lynn, we're at capacity, we're really beyond capacity turning students away. So you have some capacity issues, but as Mark's conditions assessment would reflect, you also have some significant long-term maintenance issues here that, you know, that aren't inexpensive to address. And so when looking at that as a whole, we start to drill into answering that question. Does it make sense to try and renovate, or should we think about building new? So I will say, this effort is at a macro level. When we were asked to take a look at this, we really want to first answer the question, are there compelling reasons to look at this a little closer? And so this macro level evaluation helps us narrow down that approach to the project if you were to move forward with it. The Phase Two has not yet been done. That's kind of what we're here to evaluate. Does it make sense to go to a Phase Two? And that's a more detailed evaluation that looks at it greater depth in the design, costs, schedule, once the direction's been selected based on Phase One, right? Are we gonna renovate and expand? Are we gonna build new? So this approach kind of helps the school board and county avoid any kind of unnecessary costs and, you know, studying this thing over and over and over again. At the onset, we started this exercise with a programming session with Mr. Lynn, some faculty, as well as the administration, about all the programs that they have here at Triple Tech, but not only that, what programs, Mr. Lynn even shared, what programs might you have? What are the student interests? What's happening also across the Commonwealth and CTE centers? They may have some relevance here. So we go through a full day of programming with, with staff here to look at all the, what we call centers, centers for transportation, centers for construction careers. And that's just a, a, a primary category, a placeholder for many things underneath it. In other words, construction careers will have masonry, carpentry, electrical, HVAC. All of those are categorized under that. This is a, a multi-page document, but this is a summary. Once we finish that exercise, we recognize a total need of about 93,000 square feet for a ideal CTE center for Shamdill County. This building is a little shy of 60,000 square feet, so you can kind of see the shortage there in the space and what you have, and then also what you may project to have in the future. So we'll talk really briefly about what makes a good CTE center. And I, I've, this list is not exhaustive, we could probably add many more to this, but at the very pinnacle of all of it, we want a future-proofed design. Something that is seeking flexibility over time. Mr. Lynn can attest to the fact that programs do change. Enrollments swing drastically sometimes, you know, the interest there, sometimes the market changes significantly such that you don't need that program in your area anymore. Well, we don't want to build a facility that limits that particular space to just that function. We want to be able to say, what is a general classroom now may be able to be converted into a health sciences classroom in the future. So with that thought in mind, we were thinking, how do we future-proof the design? First, generous interior clearances. And we mean that both in floor to the bottom of the structure, as well as clear spaces or fewer columns in the middle of larger spaces, fewer or strategically placed interior bearing walls. You all are, you know, we're in a fairly large room right now, the ceiling height is fairly low, we'll look at that in just a minute, but this would be very limiting in what we could convert this space to, should we want to change its function in the future. Next, heavy infrastructure. Adequate mechanical ventilation, large capacity electrical service, above slab and accessible MEP chases and raceways, so being able to expand a, a plumbing line, or an airdrop, or a gas line to feed any particular function in the teaching spaces. Ample exterior space, we'll take a look at the site plans and things, and even look at some examples of successful site plans. Having a safe, controlled exterior project area, so important in CTE functions, because that is not only a, a classroom, but it's a collaboration space, where they're bringing together carpentry, HVAC, or on the other side, they may be bringing together diesel and auto body to work together at an exterior classroom. Clearances for large vehicles, plenty of area for secure material storage. Building layout, Mr. Lynn actually indicated this a little earlier when he was speaking, allowing careful placement of clean labs, things like nursing, health sciences, cyber, cybersecurity, IT versus a dirty lab, masonry, carpentry. Being able to carefully place those in the plan such that they, they can collaborate, but they don't cross-contaminate, even things like acoustics, considering that. Public interface, how important that is in a CTE center when you're trying to reach, or your students are trying to reach, the industries in the area. Think about the culinary program that we enjoyed this evening, if that were available, more available to the public as a bistro, that the public could come out and grab a lunch, right? Great example, great example of public interface. It certainly gives a boost to the CTE center and it gets you out into, out into your county and surrounding.
What kind of lunch you are, baby?
Whatever you want. So let's, let's drill into this, this, this building specifically. Two things we noticed right away, two major site constraints, your site geometry. You know, you're bound on both sides, neither neighbor are, are moving anytime soon, so we are very limited in our site area, where we could expand if we needed to. The solar, the ground mounted solar system setting to the rear of the property here, that becomes a hurdle as well. So we're very limited on where we can expand. You'll note how limited the parking is. Many of you may have been here during the day when this place is really happening. We, we have visited several times during today and nearly have to park out on the road just to get a place to put our vehicles. So site constraints, the geometry is very difficult to deal with. Secondly, this building, this is a great room, great example to, as what we're speaking of here, the height limitations from the floor to the bottom of the structure are very limited. In a typical classroom, even an elementary classroom, if we were to do a new building, that floor to bottom of the structure would probably be somewhere between 14 A and 16 feet, even in an elementary classroom, because of all the heavy infrastructure that goes above ceiling these days. This building, the area in the gray, floor to bottom of the structure is below 10 feet. So the space above these ceilings is very, very limited. Hard to adapt, hard to add new infrastructure. Danny can probably attest to how difficult it is to deal with the structure above these ceilings. The area in the, kind of the beige areas there, those are only, the only spaces that are beginning to approach a more appropriate clear height. And those are your, what we were going to call for the time being, your high base spaces. So you have masonry and auto body and things like, or all your automotive functions, carpentry, those are all occupying those higher spaces right now, which makes sense. But ideally, the clear height there would be at least 16 feet. We did look at initial concept to renovate and expand this facility. We know Triple Tech is, has a special affinity for this county and this community, we respect that tremendously, and rightly so. It served its function so well for so long. When it was built, I'm sure this facility was top-notch, top of its class, and provided for every need. However, things have changed significantly in CTE instruction, and so we're, we wanted to give a nod to can we expand this and what that might look like? But then also compare that to a new building. So you see there, the, the previous spaces that we had called the high base spaces, they're in yellow in this diagram. We are saying, let's keep those. We can renovate those, we can do something with those, the, the clear height is enough to turn into a functional space, but everything in the dashed red area there, that's indicating the rest of the footprint that's at that less than 10 feet of clear space. We are suggesting that that be demolished. And then new areas in blue are all, new areas that we've programmed, I shared that program with you earlier, but you can see here, that's an opportunity to actually create those high bay labs, mid, mid-height space. And then here at the front, fronting the, the main road up here, a two-story wing for clean labs, and also administration, so giving the building a new front door, creating a presence in the community which is so critical for CTEs. So that total area of the yellow and red together equates to approximately that 93,000 square feet we programmed earlier. And then we did, and I know this is very hard to read, so I won't go into great detail, but we did go through an exercise, again, at a very high level, you can see these are by hand, but at a very high level, go through the program, make sure all the program spaces fit, they're appropriately sized. Zooming in there on the first floor, you can see the service yards, unfortunately, because we are bound on both sides, the service yards really don't have anywhere to go in this plan. One, one key element of future-proofing is allowing for future expansion. Unfortunately, with this layout or any other we do with this, it's always towards the rear of the property. You can see that, those two dashed boxes there indicating some future square footages that could be. And then, and then showing the two-story portion, the new administration and front door area, additional parking here in the front, and then the second floor, health sciences, and a few other functions there in the background, so. Now, one of the biggest challenges, I think, with renovating and expanding this project, and one of the biggest reasons why the costs are what they are, is a significant challenge with phasing the construction. There's nowhere for Triple Tech to go when this building is being renovated and expanded. So how do we, how do we, how do we demolish over 50% of the building, but keep Triple Tech running during a multi-year project, most likely 36 months of construction?
How much does that increase the cost?
Significant.
What do you call it significant? 30%? 40%?
You know, I don't know that I could put a percent on it tonight, but I could give you some information.
Well, I'm just curious.
I would, I would say 20 to 30% more for this level of complexity.
Yeah.
And, and not only that, but the sheer impact of schedule, and we can talk about that some more. You all, it is very true, time is money, so the longer you're working and renovating and building, the more expensive that process is gonna be.
We're building, we're building smoothies.
Yeah.
As a, that's the key.
So significant challenges in the phasing of this project, construction staging area. Where is the contractor gonna be laying down of significant material? I mean, there's gonna be a lot of steel, a lot of masonry, a lot of concrete, site work, where do they go with it? That's a significant challenge. Handling the utilities and keeping, again, keeping this building functioning while you're demolishing a significant amount of utilities. Danny would attest to how difficult the electrical system, electric service here is. It's, it's maxed out completely.
Trying to keep everything remaining operational with two yellow spaces.
Right.
While you're building a new.
Temporary parking, again, for a long construction period, safety. How do you keep students safe while renovating? We've done many, many, many phased occupied construction projects of, of CTE centers and high schools. It can be done, but the very tight quarters makes it even more complex and difficult. Just a few reasons. So, again, we'll go through this kind of quickly, but one approach may be this Phase One, build the bookends. So you're building, building a new two-story wing in the front that allows you to move your administration, health sciences, and so forth to the front. You're also building this portion of high base space here in the back. So you're building the two bookends first. In Phase Two, you can, and then you can start, you can demolish this piece and then build in this portion. Phase Three, you're beginning the renovation of the existing high base spaces. And that is a very simplified version, but you're looking at three to four phases of construction while you're trying to, uh, creative education center, with about 400 students. All right. So let's talk about costs. This is a very high-level, macro-level estimate, and the costs kind of reflect the story that we've just shared with you. We have not, I will say this, we have not designed or, or provided a concept for a new building for Triple Tech today. That was not part of our macro level study. So a new, the new building cost is a theoretical cost of a building of the same size that new. So there in the blue, you can see the cost for a new building and site work. And the yellow, renovating, expanding, all the demolition, and creating swing space, the cost for renovating Triple Tech. It's kind of alarming how close those two numbers are. And, you know, keep in mind, a large portion of the existing Triple, in our concept, would be demolished. So you're about, what is that? I don't remember this. About 30,000 square feet of demolished space, and the rest of it would be new. And then we have renovated area of about 21,000. So that's one reason why these things are kind of close. So there is a cost to time, a cost to weight, you like to provide this as well. Escalation over the past five to seven years has been unlike anything we've seen in the construction industry. It's been as high as 10% steel. When the pandemic first hit, steel increased 300% nearly overnight, if you could get it. So there was major impacts to that that had yet to really be corrected. There's not been a market correction of that. However, escalation has flattened quite a bit recently, and it's getting, it's getting better, we're seeing a marked improvement. However, again, just taking a new building at about 60 million, if you escalate that, and my slide's cut off, but if you escalate that over four years, you can see the cost of weight year over year, about 3.5% compounded, gets up to about 67 million just weighing with four years. All right, I'll pause there just briefly before the one in the next section.
I know I asked you all this last time, but we have different people in charge this time. So with your experience, how realistic is it to be able to rebuild or renovate or build there?
My opinion, my professional opinion, is it would be very, very difficult and very costly. And I think the figures kind of tell us right about. I think even if you were to invest that kind of money here, at the end of the project, I, I don't think you would be as pleased with this.
I think the key you hit on when you presented this before as well was, if we do the renovation here, it still doesn't leave any room for future expansion. And I think that was the big thing I took away from my last presentation to just the school board. This piece of property doesn't allow for any future expansion, so the dollar amounts that were spent, if we were to proceed, to me, I'd say we're gonna do.
You have to look at 50 years and, and, you know, what we're, what we're looking at, what we might be bringing in, whereas here, we're already maxed out, we do have a pretty building, but we may only be able to add a couple more in, in 10 years, we're looking at this angle, where are we gonna sit all these new corporations? And we don't have to. We also, I don't know if this can talk about this, in terms of the, of the land that we have, and the possibilities of what we would be able to do, because that also includes the fact that it would be central, that it could actually help the city face a smaller school, so I don't know if that's something that you would be able to talk about or.
So we have 40, about 40 acres at the central campus that would, we could use to building the facility.
I'll put you in the spot.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm looking, looking to make sure I'm telling you the right thing. But yeah, so it's right behind Peter Meilenberg Middle School, and it is, has frontage on Ox, that's not Ox, that's Hoover Road, and then it feeds out into Route 11, which could give us another opportunity to have some additional ways, additional transportation out of our central campus. So currently, we have Route 42 that we can come in on, and if we were able to go through this other property that we have, then we may be able to have a second entrance and exit from our central campus. So that may be helpful as well, depending on the design and the layout. We do know that there are some constraints to the 40. We do know that there are some constraints to the 40, 40.497 acres that we own. I know that there is a small cemetery there, yes, and we do need to do some geological surveys on the property because it's right behind Peter Millenberg, which had some class over the last, you know, that we discovered in the last two years or two. So we need to do some additional geological surveys to determine if there's some classes that exist.
And you guys said it would require, what, 18, 20 acres for it to be?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, 20.
Ideal.
Would you have to have a long-term, I guess, I don't know what I should look at, but if you were to pick out a school, whether it's Triple Tech or that school, and plop it down in the middle of property owners, would we be at good planning or bad planning, not knowing what else we need in that area?
You're asking like if we were to need to build an elementary school?
Yeah, at some point in time, if we're going to need that, and I'm not poor, again, I'm just saying that one was going to have to look at a long-term site plan, in my opinion, because they could bang for our buck, I mean, for our taxpayers. We did well working with the school board years ago in obtaining that land. We really did. And that was money that we saved working with the school board, investing it over the years. And if you do some property, for those of you all that are rookies here, we saved money working with the school and investing in property that the property we built there, that we bought from Ox Road, the school board bought Ox Road and Hoover Road, and then down to Stollberg, about 87 to 90% of that was paid for by money that we saved, invested, the school board saving money, and instead of saying, you know, hey, you give it to us, well, invested, that money came back while working together. You know, it was a great, great benefit. Like I say, very little of that money was coming out of the can of coal for us, extra dollars, right? It was money that we saved years ago, the school board, you know, they would have to hustle to spend that money by the end of the year. It was a look, we save the money, we'll invest it, we won't take it back, put it in the general fund, we'll save it. And we saved a substantial amount of money to buy that land, and both property owners, both the Dopeen Hours and the Stickleys, were very generous in giving us a really, really good deal on that land. A lot of credit goes to them, they were community-minded, children were very important to them, and we worked with them, but majority of that money, by far, was spent on money that we gave to two groups, saved and invested. So I'm just thinking, long-term, we have to have some kind of site plan of future use, like you said, Cal. If we need another school, we don't want to plop it down and build 20 acres and then say, oh geez, we should have it over here.
Yeah, Mr. Borris, if I could, I think what you're asking for is a site master plan.
Master plan, that's where, yeah, yeah.
Thinking not just about, you know, if the county were to undertake Triple Tech now, I'll talk about the big picture scheme. If you were to say, okay, hire an architect now, get them going on design for a new facility, that's, that period of time alone is somewhere between 12 and 18 months. And then to build a new facility is probably somewhere between 24 and 30, 24, 36, that's a, long term. So you've seen four or five years pass before a triple's open. So that's just looking at one piece. A site master plan effort may look at a 10-year period, 15-year period. And, you know, we don't yet know, and you all know, we don't yet know what other facilities, what other functions you may want on this facility. Could be ball fields, it could be another school, it could be a maintenance facility, who knows?
That's my point.
And that's, you know, that's really, when I, at the beginning, when I said, this is a phase one study, there's other compelling reasons to look at it a little deeper. That phase two study would be something like that, facilities, a site master plan.
Is there a very good chance that we could?
Yeah, I'll say this back, because I was going to go also, when you say purchase second lien. I think the villain most, the worst of this impact is for future growth for the campuses because it's be just a matter of time before you need a school or a central location, and probably a local location. So you go take that space there and put new Triple Tech, what do you, those two won't be able to fit two schools in that space, correct?
I think, you know, we haven't been asked to look at the site yet, if that's something that the school board and the county might have seen, certainly have to do. You know, it's, what do we say, about 40 acres, Dr. Shepherd? Forty acres is significant enough that with careful planning, you can address several of your issues. One of the biggest issues that we see out there from the conditions assessment is the vehicular traffic at Central Campus. By developing that property, whether it be for a new Triple Tech or not, you could address some other issues that have to be addressed as well. As far as two full schools on a 40-acre site, that would be, that would be kind of tight. Probably, an elementary school, I think they like to see somewhere between 13 and 15 acres for an elementary school. High school, much more significant because of the ball fields and probably against the various facilities.
I think that site plan too would help the county and the school board, school division, understand, is it really new schools? And you want them on a different site, three on that site, or is it building additions to the existing? So maybe that site master plan leaves a chunk of square footage for each of the three schools on campus, for addition to address all the ground. Because the way that the county's set up right now, you have a campus, everything's on one campus, so having a standalone school that's off-site is going to potentially throw up wrenchings to transportation and a number of other things. So leaving a footprint for the elementary, the middle, and the high on each, on that site for future growth, I think is key, is part of that master plan.
I'm going to take a little comment here. We got us in a situation, a situation where there should be an elementary school every time, and we decided we would cancel that. So that was over 37 years, and we haven't seen a jump down. But of course, I wasn't, I figured that was going to be a bad thing, creating some issues on the career line.
This project's going to take five years, and it's estimated 60 million. Probably by the time you do the, the time you do plans, it's taking two years to do the plans, or three years to build it, you're probably, instead of 60 million, you're probably going to be around 75 million if things keep going the way they're going, because of that stuff. How does the school system, do they have a strategic plan that says, we're not going to need any schools in that five-year period? How long out they're going to be so that you have some kind of understanding of what your debt service is going to be over a certain period of time? And if you have priority, and you said, well, W. W. Robinson is 91% full, Ashby D is 91% full, this is how we're going to take care of that, or are you saying in your master plan, I've got to look at replacing W. W. Robinson in five years? What it costs, and if it's, with 60 million dollars right now for 60,000 square feet, what would the cost be for a school? And I don't know what the square footage is of a particular school. 150 million to 20 million? Is that worked into, if you've got to make a decision, I guess is what I'm saying. If you've got to make a decision, you have to build a new school. That's why I need to worry about that a lot. And is Triple the one you would press?
So Triplet, well, this is Melody Shepherd speaking, and Cynthia Stewart speaking. Triple Tech is the, is first on our priorities, as you saw, one of the top three. They were one of the top three schools. It was built in 1966, I think that is right, and it's been, you know, it's 60, almost 60 years old without any renovations, any major renovations. I know this facility has been without electricity at least three times since schools started because of the, we've overloaded the electrical capacity.
Well, you don't have to justify it with me, I take your word.
Yes.
If that's your number one priority.
But there's an elementary?
Then I'd say, when is your number two priority going to be, and when is it going to be?
Right, and there's an elementary school right on the heels of Triple Tech because we have three, or yeah, two elementary schools that are 91% capacity, and we're going to need another elementary school.
So is that, will that come within the five years?
So probably at the end of the five years, unless the building continues, unless we have a lot of building growth. So we're at 91% capacity, we need to start thinking about an elementary school as well.
We're putting a lot of housing up in Stollberg, I mean, Stollberg is not slowing down at that, luckily there's land there. But there's other issues, safety issues, part of it across the bridge.
And a couple of things, you know, just in the past couple of years, I know in this full year '22, we returned 3.1, about 3.1 million dollars to the county from our, that we didn't spend for this full year '22. And I asked them that to get kind of put into a savings account so that we could use that for future capital projects. And unfortunately, that had to go, that money had to go to balance the operational budget. And then last year, I believe, two and a half million dollars dropped off of debt services for the renovations for the, for the three high schools. So the gymnasiums and the renovations that happened in the early 2000s, that two and a half million dollars dropped off. And again, I think that went to balance the operational budget.
And that brought that $9 million to fruition.
So I've got to add that nine million on top of the 60 million, on top of whatever, 100 million plus for the elementary school, I don't know what else. So I'm just saying, help me with the debt service so that I understand what the county is willing to pay for. And the reason I said that is, I remember negotiating with this owner to buy that 39 acres for $50,000 a acre. He was given it at that time, maybe I would like 39 acres over by three highways, water, sewer, in town for that. And we did use school surplus funds, we didn't get it back to him. I don't know if he was willing to give us this or not, but we didn't get it back to him.
But they finally got it back.
And we paid for that land. There was a lot of constituency feedback, and we were just putting nice in place, we didn't need to spend it. And now, I think I have to buy a full Triple Tech or anything else.
So, are you saying that sort of if we needed, we know, we could expand on those or we just somehow didn't need to expand?
This is Melody Shepherd speaking again. Our traffic at both of our elementary schools, Central Campus and Northern Campus, is horrendous. And I think if we expanded on that, it would be, it would be the worst, unless we did something pretty significant with our civil engineering. I don't know that we have the space or land to do something that would alleviate traffic at Northern Campus because there's really no way in and no way out. But there is, you know, there may be something that we can do there or something.
So the Central Campus, if we did this, it may be able to allow for expansion of a major school, then it could just be the Northern Campus that would be developed, if we were to kind of revisit.
I may have missed it, but we mentioned a few minutes ago, it would take probably five years to get a technical school built and to start to construct with a master plan. What would it cost, I mean, time-wise, what would it be to renovate this building?
So that five years is very generalized, we did probably compress some of that, but it just, I would say, if that were, if to get from start to finish on a new build today took five years, to renovate this, I would add a whole nother year. Because renovations alone, they add complexity because you have to make the highest value of your three summer months. Every summer counts because there's no students in there, right? That's your biggest opportunity to make big pushes in construction. So you would need at least one more full summer, I think, at a minimum, to renovate this building versus the other.
And that's to add more cost.
Significantly more.
Oh. I'm going straight to the clock. Come on.
Good one, Jim.
Sorry. These, if it takes one year, two years, three years, four years, five years to do it, would you be looking, and the need for the additional space is now? You have 30 kids slots that you couldn't fill, and it's going to grow as kids talk to kids and that happens. Would you be looking at maybe utilizing some of Stonewall Jackson's space, if they're only 64%, to use that as growth until you do do something at Triple?
So one of the issues that we have is the high base space. So, high base space, we need taller ceilings to do a rowing class, we need taller ceilings to do decent paintings. So those are the classes that we can offer, that our kids are asking for, and that our industry is asking for, that we're not able to supply. And that's not something that we could find at Stonewall Jackson.
So you want, new building, this is going to help you with your third, with health sciences, with EMT, with any of that, I mean, because you can't put EMT in Stonewall, fire departments?
So you could, but that facility that they use here is still a low, a low ceiling space.
So you would be restricted as far as growing those, which you could still address, unless you already have enough room to grow here for all the other folks, it's just the high ceiling classrooms that you don't have room for. Is that what you're counting on?
Pretty much, yes. Mr. Landlord, some of the other classes that we have considered that don't necessarily need high ceiling spaces.
So you've got aviation, whether that's drone, whether that's drones, whether that's pilot program.
Sorry, I can't hear you.
Whether that's, so aviation would be one, an aviation program, whether we're looking at pilots or drones, we could do that in a low base space. We need to be outside, but we could, we could do that in a low base space. Some of the machine learning, some of the artificial intelligence, machine learning, robotics, you could do in a lower base space. Past that, I mean, most of the other programs would be in high base space.
The, the, what I'm hearing is, you've got plenty of low base space to grow, it's the high base space that you don't want to grow.
So here, now, right now?
So plenty would be two, two spaces in the morning and three spaces in the afternoon. So it's not, it's not a lot. We work on half-day programs here, so I got a group of kids that's here from 8:30 to 11:15, and then I have another group of students here from 12:30 to 2:40. So some are, not every space is used. So like my criminal justice program, which right across the hall, that's a low base space, we only teach that class in the morning. So if we wanted to add a pilot program, I could put that, that program there in the afternoon.
Well, my statement is correct.
There's some.
We've got low base space, it's the high base ceiling space, not a global student.
I think the key we're missing there, we're getting off track on, is it's the same dollar amount. But we're talking about displacing kids for the next five years while we renovate this space, and then when we're all said and done, 20 years from now, when they want to expand again, there's no room here.
Yeah, I'm not debating that. I understand, I'm just saying, when I go to build, if we build a new facility someplace, your need for space... go to build, if we build a new facility someplace, your need for space is today, even if you have this building and you don't have that. And how do you take care of the next two, three years, addressing the needs of the student space in this facility while you're building a new facility someplace? And what I'm hearing is, you can't do it even then because don't have the space, high space to increase HVAC, to increase home mechanics or whatever it is that requires that. Can the health services, things of that nature, E and T, things of that nature, because I have the room. So the only challenge you would have left is, if you want to grow that, I don't want a site place anywhere for that if you had to, or freeze it at whatever that level is for two or three years.
But, but, and, um, so you guys have presented a couple, the sixty million dollar alternative is one.
Right.
There's another alternative, or is that it? Because you showed us a footprint once upon a time of kind of horizontal space, so called, that, uh, that would kind of fit in this ground, but it wouldn't have to be this ground. Like, it was, uh, wasn't that the basis of the Culpeper?
Yeah, it's a, yeah.
And you visited that and saw it was a very functional, very modern. I mean, we talked to concrete floors, we talked about speed, they could expose trusses and beams and looked very good, very functional, uh, not a lot of glass and foam, but there was a lot of functions and, uh, covered bay area, which was-
Extremely nice.
So is that the sixty million dollar solution or is that, or is it the other one you want with Cadillac today?
So I would say the sixty million dollar, and that's a great, if I could, I don't want to dig real conversation, but I do have a couple of examples and Culpeper is one of them that I can show you of kind of two, two extremes.
But, but you'll give us the cost of those, the varying cost of those?
We, we can't, yes. So what I have, the rest of the presentation, are, are two examples of, of CTE centers that R and M has designed. And one of them is built and one of them just broke ground. The first one we'll show you is kind of, uh, it's bigger than what we would propose for Triple Tech. Triple Tech's program that we have worked through is about ninety-three thousand. The building I'm going to show you next is about a hundred and twenty-five thousand, give or take. So that's much bigger than, than Triple. But it kind of shows all those key elements that make a successful CTE center that would be applied, whether it's a sixty thousand square foot of building or a, or a hundred. So we'll show you that. And then the opposite end of that, which some of you have visited, uh, is a, a award-winning CTE center. It's about sixty thousand, which is the same size as this little one, just a new one. And that was at Culpeper. Many of you have visited that. So the first one is, is just broke ground in Roman County on their CTE center. Again, this one's about a hundred and twenty-two to a hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet. Programs are very, very similar to, to Triple. All the same kind of centers for transportation, centers for construction services and on and on and on. You can kind of see here, large site, this site, not quite forty acres, but, you know, you can see the ample site space surrounding the building. Plenty of parking in the front, has a presence at the front door, but also that rear prop, rear of the property there for your construction yards, your collaboration spaces and so forth. Note the building shape is an L that allows the, the, um, the county to expand in both directions in the future so they can take both of those wings up further. Also gives the layout, the layout allows for separation of the clean labs versus dirty labs. Again, I'm going to do it quickly because I know we've been up here quite a while. Zooming into the floor plan, you can see that layout there. Note the center, kind of the knuckle of the building here, that green space, a large expo center. Um, you know, think about, uh, kind of set up, uh, and Mr. Land has done it many times, I'm sure, Career Day in this room with multiple industries around the room. That's really the, the function of that green space, but amplified significantly, but also allowing it to be subdivided into lecture halls, uh, upper floor for clean labs, engineering, mass comp and so forth. This is the exterior renderings of that rear yard back there. Plenty of space to work, covered area, front door, and that interior, uh, common space that can be large, open for expos, for rear days. But also, you can see that bottom right picture there, that operable partition drop down and turn it down into two lecture halls. So that's one example. That project is, um, again, we just, they just broke ground on it, about seventy-seven million, all-in cost for construction and bricks and mortar and stuff.
How many support can you have those?
About a hundred and twenty-five thousand, we could take. Alright, so, um, the new Culpeper, uh, CTE center, this, this building is done. It's been open for a couple of years now. You can see, this is a more long-term building, kind of a, um, single loaded corridor. That's really the most efficient you can do with your building layout. But still, looking at the site, ample site space, plenty of circulation, plenty of area for CTE, lay-down yard and covered area. Again, a much smaller program, but you can kind of see the same programs that you have here at Triple, just a little bit smaller, transportation, nursing, E and T and so forth. Uh, you all recall the floor to ceiling height, how important that is, the floor to bottom structure. This is a, a representative section through the building that shows the, their auto tech lab. You can see the vehicles there on the lift, all that's to scale, but showing the ability to, to put more lifts in the space. And then as you move towards the front of the building there, uh, a little bit lower ceiling height for general classroom. So this is the actual space, so that, that building section right there is, is that photo. And then there's a, an exterior drone shot showing that lay-down yard. Uh, the new front entry, again, um, you know, as, as we said earlier, not overly glamorous, but it is a very attractive building.
Those are the panels?
Those are, it's, that is a, a solar panel array there on the roof.
Was that paid for by, was any type of separate play, uh, play in the, in the ballgame on that deal? Of course, what we cost, was that strictly paid for by what government?
You mean the, the tunnel project as a whole? To my knowledge, it was all, all council, but, but, it's on state property.
Yes, sir.
Well, it kind of raises a point that we've been talking about. I mean, we'd like to have some kind of committee that the community would help out bring some donors, uh, who would be willing to give, you know, may buy a wing of, of the building, like a company that would be able to sponsor something.
Maybe like-
Yes.
I've got a question about your, oh, it's first information that you shared about it was a fifteen-year time period, about ninety million dollars just to, one of these were renovated, just to maintain, I guess, replace old systems, et cetera, et cetera. We get fifteen years, ninety million dollars, that's not adding in the space. That's basically taking the current buildings and getting them up to par. So what kind of shelf life will they have once they're done?
Very much.
So I, I don't want to, you know, you don't need to return your investment. You don't spend this amount of money, but all of a sudden, well, guess what? We're going to build, so, I know it's a tough question and that might require a little digging, but you know.
Yeah, so I would say the, the majority of the deferred maintenance at nighting is probably within the first eight years on that fifteen-year schedule. Um, I think when you're talking about putting money in that you just waste on the back end, you're really looking at the structure, the infrastructure itself, the, the exterior of the wall, the roofing, you can't, I mean, the, the metal decking, the structural steel. Almost all these schools have very minimal structural issues. It's all building systems for, when you get into years five, six, seven and eight, it's more cosmetic, it's ceilings, flooring, that type. So I don't think, if your question is, is will we, will we be wasting money if we put ninety million in schools now? We'll still get it out of the thirty to forty year time.
Actually, I guess I'll add your question a little bit too. This kind of day, we're talking about a big master plan. But see, tomorrow, Lynn, is we got to look beyond the schools. Uh, so I guess we've got to call them out. The politics, I mean, we're, you know, poor situation, isn't it? When it comes to our short-term decisions, uh, performance, okay, library, certain core. So I think our site planning has to be very comprehensive.
All inclusive.
Like for, you know, Danny was maintenance, but also Lucas is a here. So I'm like thinking, okay, we got a new Triple Tech building. They have automatic candy, et cetera. So okay, maybe our transportation people will then save footprint close to Triple Tech, or maybe they have, okay, they could slide over there, working some of their buses or something. I think, we've got to really look comprehensively because we're sitting here this week now, we're bossing a lot of very, we need, we're going to be, we, 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 we got that, we got to hear all of it.
Sure.
And, and the needs are real, okay? And, and that's what makes everyone stop, tough. It's got to really be comprehensive. How do we make the best utilization of this property that we currently have? And that's what you asked me, that.
That's my thought.
You asked me. So I think that's critical. But I'm good to hear, it's nice to know that, that what, that we spend that money, that we will have usable buildings if we are buildings, machines and that type of thing. We've got to look at those, again, maintenance, trace, does that fit into the triple model some way? If that's at a central location, then we can kind of put that in some footprint there. Then there's a performance center tie-in, that, that may have to be a program, uh, like be involved with Triple Tech or even the quarters, the healthcare, things like that, PT and F T. So that's, that's, that's the news that's going to change.
And, you know, we can look at this ninety million dollar deferred cost, you know, and, and we can shake our head, we can scratch our head and we can lose our sleep tonight. But same time, some parts count, we're going to need a new school regardless of what the deferred cost will be. Uh, you know, with, with what we have, we have outgrown what we have now. Uh, I think in twenty, forty-five, our youngest school will be like fifty years old in that ballpark. So, you know, it, it, it's, like you say, you got to look at the whole picture. And, you know, we're sweating both because of ninety billion, million dollars deferred, but we're looking at, hey, at some point in time, we're going to have to build a new school, whatever might be happening.
Yeah, that's important, I think.
Yeah, exactly.
Conversation.
Yeah, let's, let's get to it, right?
Good information. Excellent.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Can you shut by the discussion?
Uh, we know it's, it's not an easy consideration. And again, this is a very condensed school down there, and there's just a, a ton of work, not only by our team, but also the administration here, the school board, uh, Mr. Man, all the directors and principals and Danny. And, you know, if, if we're going to just kind of wrap up what we have to say, I just want to leave you with a little bit of, um, encouragement to say that we, we, we go into tremendous amount of facilities across town. You know, we, we serve a lot of counties. Uh, we see a lot of buildings, we work a lot of folks, but, um, we have to say your folks are fantastic. All, uh, the administration, teachers, everyone's doing a tremendous job in the facilities that you have. They are truly maximizing every single piece of facilities that you have for your students. And so we would applaud you all for that. And it's been a pleasure to be in your facilities, to be with your folks. So we thank you.
I don't know if I understood or just, right, the, um, sixty million dollar, what's that for?
The sixty million dollars.
What design? Is that the design you showed us?
No, we haven't designed the, no, we haven't been asked.
And, right, but, um, sixty million has to be based on some?
Sure. Yeah, I can back up and show you. Again, I, I kind of went over, it's a theoretical new school that fits your program, ninety thousand square feet. It's based on square foot costs that are, um, correct with the day's market. So that area in blue, you see there, theoretical new site and building. It's about, this number we used was about ninety-eight thousand. The program flushes out to about ninety-three thousand. So that could be adjusted slightly. Unit cost right now is about four fifty a square foot for a new building. Uh, that's a result of, uh, you know, living through a pandemic, numbers have changed tremendously, but four fifty is about what we're seeing now. Of course, you're not renovating anything in this, or, or demolishing anything. The site work allowance, that is a lump sum placeholder for a theoretical site. We didn't even consider the site as central. That could be twenty-plus acres anywhere at about seven and a half million worth of site.
So, so it's measured in square foot?
Yes, that's a square footage cost estimate. Now, the next, my last slide, which I won't flip back through, was a question of what's next. So let's check-
Check the man is today.
That is today's cost.
Right, and that's what we need to keep in back of our mind. If that, that's not true cost, we're full back with that, right?
Twenty-four dollars.
Right.
Culpeper, school, how many acres does that take?
That, uh, you know, I'd have to go back on. That, that project was designed through code and built through code. So those dollars and everything.
They.
At least like fifteen to eighteen acres, I think, that's all. It's not fifteen, I imagine, to be honest, you know, it's, it's, I mean, it's-
What's the problem, isn't it? In the queue, they want you to put in a seven acre pond and never see water in there.
Yeah, and twenty, and I will get in on that until we're here another hour, but, um, twenty-fourteen school water regulations changed tremendously. So if you deserve more than an acre of property, you got to deal with it.
There's other ways to do that, besides, like, in parks.
Are, is there other acres that the county has that we can consider other than this for this project?
I don't, ever, I don't have that question.
For that purpose, continue with the campus, or, or anyone?
Well, I'm talking to, with Triple. So if, to Mr. Morrison's view that, you know, we're going to have to expand in some of those spots, remove schools, and like I said, the traffic's atrocious, but is there another spot that the county could offer for any Triple if it wasn't at the central?
Boy, I got to go. I, I really don't know one that would assume, I, I would assume it would have to have public water in store to, to make that work. It would be up to the policymakers to decide. The only public property the county owns that has both water and store would become , or, or, that I can think of. Now, when I leave here, I'll have five other options, one that comes to mind.
Yeah, it's, it's county, county farm.
It's all, or, same, or, or.
Yes. And how many acres is that?
Um, that's three hundred.
So we could, don't, I mean, we could really, with Triple, one is, just, that, so, I mean, it, it, all options, to your, to your point.
You've got to realize, the county farms are sacred ground. And you've got to be very, very careful.
All of it's sacred ground. I mean, when you start talking about, I mean, when we started talking about this project, the stuff that come up in social media is, you know, that we were taking this, even idea of moving this building to central.
Oh, I know, I know.
Or changing the name or some of the absurd things that come out of the public's mouth over this. I mean, yeah, we'll find, we'll write you over these buildings. That means we're, for sure, we love them. But we have to be realistic about, about future as well.
Now, just to want to clarify something, um, we talked about having a new campus or just a new school. I think we have an appropriate number of high schools and an appropriate number of middle schools for our current, you know, in, in future population here in Tannenoke County. I think where, you know, where we need to go is an elementary school, but that'll be, you know, that's not today. That may be in five years or seven years or whenever. So I'm, I'm not saying another campus and a new elementary school. And if we had something in between W W Robinson and Sandy Hook Elementary School that could take, that could take students from both of those, we could, um, really maximize.
Really open, um, school?
Yeah, you, you, you said exactly what I was thinking. The condition of the facility is incredibly important, but having over a thousand kids at W W Robinson is incredibly important too.
And that's something we have to face, face there on.
Yeah.
And you're not far behind at Strohsburg.
And with the new housing developments that are coming in, but that would suck in at Strohsburg, um, that would be out there.
Yeah, boy, then you should have got Stonebridge then, two thousand sixteen. And then a lot of seals, a lot of, uh, and that's something, you know, conjunction. Almost ten years ago.
Yep.
And it's our point, if you, if you go take time, pay for- And it's our point, if you go take time, pay for studies and things like that, you've got to be willing to use.
Absolutely.
Spend money, it's wasting taxpayers' dollars. And you look at that, and I'd say, look at Dallas, I'd have to start going around. You've got to be willing to make, do what you've got to do.
I step forward the selling point to the public, whatever direction we, you all go into, yeah, I think with good plan, a good tool in our toolbox, it's true that we've done our due diligence. And from that new thing, just, you know, really, really, and I think the public would really appreciate short-term and long-term planning, I mean, it's a real, it's a real selling point, if they know what the future has for their children and grandchildren.
Gentlemen, we appreciate what you've done, all the information's gone into this. I've heard it twice, and I'm still trying to ask you, and we're working on it, we appreciate what you've done.
Thank you all so much.
Now lose your hat up.
I was like, yeah.
You don't get paid any less.
Dr. Shepherd, you have another softball for us?
I do, I do, yeah. I told Mr. Bass that, you know, we would be out here by eight o'clock, so I am going to.
You can go ahead.
Let's go.
He was staying up so late.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So I'm going to do an abbreviated version of information on school threats. So just, you know, just hang with me just for a few more minutes, about ten, I'm thinking, and then any questions you guys have, I'll be answering. As you guys are aware, over the last several weeks, there's been an increased number of school threats across the nation. And here in Shenandoah County, we've experienced that as well. So this purpose, the purpose of this presentation is help you to understand what we do when we receive this for the threat. And we really have two, two threats I want to talk about. The first threat is what happens during the school day. And then the other one I want to talk about is what happens when we get this for the threat in the evenings or on weekends, so while school's not in session. But we've received various threats over the last couple of weeks. They've been verbal, they've been on Snapchat, we had one threat over a weekend that a student was standing with another student from New Jersey, and there was a school threat at that time. So you know, so there's various, social media threats as well. So there are various ways that we receive threats, and you know, we take every single one of them seriously. So our response to school threats. So the very first thing that happens is that a student or staff notifies our school administration that there's been a threat. And, you know, I just want to iterate how very important it is for our students to let us know. And not to, you know, if it's a, if it's on social media, don't reshare that social media thread with all, you know, your twenty friends, immediately tell an adult that there's been a threat, because that's very important, so we can start investigating immediately. So what happens is a student or the staff member tells the, tells the school administration, and then the school administration lets the school resource officer know, and lets the division staff know as well. And as soon as the division gets that information, we have Kevin Trudgeon, our new communications person, send out a message, hey, and we make a determination, are we going to go on lockdown, are we going to go on lock-in? You know, what are we going to do, what type of threat is this, and how are we going to respond to it? And as we're doing that, the school is actively investigating that threat. So they're calling in students, you know, and so they get as much information from one student and as many names as they can from every student, and they start going through those students and interviewing those students. And once they get to the point where they've identified who the threat originated from, then that's when, you know, we start talking to parents and we start looking at cell phones. If they can identify where the threat comes from, but it's on Snapchat or some form of TikTok or some form of social media, our school resource officers will actually go to get a warrant so that they can go to the social media company and say, hey, we need to know where this threat originated. And the social media company is usually pretty quick in responding, saying, okay, here, it came from this IP address. And the IP address is like a digital fingerprint. So it'll tell where the location of that, that computer that originated that threat came from. But that could take three hours, it could take five hours, it could take two hours. It just depends on, you know, where, how long it takes to investigate the process. Our sheriff's office, the school resource officers, and our school administration will not let this go until we've actually identified the person who sent the threat. One of the threats originated in New Jersey, one of the threats originated at Stralsburg High School. You know, so it just depends on where it originated, as to what the outcome is. So after we've interviewed the students and determined who created the, the threat, then if it's one of our students, then they, we immediately call parents and the student is then charged. And the charge is a felony, or it can be an misdemeanor. The student is suspended from school for two weeks with a requirement that they see the superintendent for further, further discipline. So during that two weeks, the student comes and meets with either myself or Dr. Han Garner and a group of other staff, and we determine what that student is going to do for the remainder of the year. The likelihood that they're going to return to their high school is very slim. They're either going to go on home-based services, they're going to go to one of our alternative programs, or they're going, you know, or I'm going to recommend expulsion. So the likelihood that they're going to return this semester or even this year is this slim. So, and then also there are legal consequences, which we have no control over. So, let me look and see. Once the, once the student is charged, then they're transported by the school resource officers to the courthouse for questioning. So, you know, it's a very serious, serious thing for our sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen-year-olds to do. And then at the end of the threat, once we've identified that it's not, not real, then we'll lift the lock-in or the lockdown, whatever, you know, whatever we determine, and we'll send a message to the parents. So, and then we immediately start a threat, a threat assessment. So that involves the SRO, the school principal, it involves the school counselor to determine what level of threat is this student, if they, if, you know, to our, to our school community. And often, then the SROs visit the house, the home, and search for weapons and guns and see what the accessibility is. So, you know, it's, it's very traumatic for the parents, it's very traumatic for the students. But we can't forget the level of stress that it adds to our staff and our students. So when you say those, those words, lock-in or lockdown, the level of fear and anxiety goes from here to here. And that's just, you know, we don't want our students to be scared. So then we have threats that happen outside of school hours, what happens there? So typically, the phone call comes into the emergency communication center, and then a phone call, then the captain lock will call myself, and then I'll call the school principal, and we'll start the investigation there. So they get as much information as they're able to get, and we start calling parents and students. And so we get down to the very root cause of the threat. And I know SROs and principals have visited homes to interview students, and then after they've interviewed one student, that leads to another student. So they go visit that student if they're not able to reach them off the phone. And they go until they found who actually originated, that the source that the threat was originated from, and they, and they come with legal action if it's not from one of our students. If it's not, then they communicate with the community in which that threat originated, and that community then investigates and says they're in charges. I would encourage our parents and our community, if they know of something, please let us know as soon as they hear about it. A couple of times, we've had threats that have come in earlier in the day, and we weren't notified until seven-thirty. So, and then those threats weren't resolved until eleven o'clock at night. So I'm sending a message to parents at eleven o'clock at night, well, you know, if we would have known at five-thirty, then maybe it could have been nine o'clock. But it's very important that we communicate with parents because once this information gets out, parents and our students are concerned, and they're worried about coming to school the next day. But if we can find the source and we're able to say that it was, it wasn't a valid threat, then it alleviates some of that stress. And again, after, you know, after we've identified who, who started the threat, then we start a threat assessment for the call. And there are school consequences, and there are legal consequences as well for those out-of-school threats. And we send out a message as soon as we're able to, to let parents know what happened there. And if I were to just reiterate the amount of stress that these threats cause, and fear in our students and our staff, I just want to, you know, encourage parents to talk to their students about the fear that they cause in other people. It's just not one of the responses that we got, even if they were just joking or kidding when they made the threat, the amount of fear that they caused with other people is extreme. Because the number of school shootings that we've had over the, for the last couple of years. Happy to answer your questions, I know that was quick.
No, they did, I continued, I mean, it wasn't who said, did you see a big, did you say, no, the next way?
We did, and we saw a lot of parents kind of pick their children up. Not necessarily at the site, because if the site's on lockdown or lock-in, we don't let parent, we don't let any people from the outside come in. But students at other schools on that campus, if they were allowed to pick up their children, some of them did. So attendance did decline at the schools at the risk rate.
How do you handle a lockdown at Stralsburg for those kids over here? Because you're not letting anybody in around. I mean, if it happens at a opportune time, what are you doing, what can you do, keep them here?
Yep, so we have kids at Central High School that go to Stralsburg and Stonewall Jackson. We have students at Triple Tech that go to all three high schools. And then we have students at Stonewall Jackson that go to Central and Stralsburg. So they just, they put until that was a threat.
Are our building administrators having conversations, making comments about, you know, at our last meeting about, you know, you shouldn't hear it necessarily from, all, just totally from your parents, but we're saying it out loud, you know, tonight.
So at the elementary school, our SROs and our principals wait classroom, the classroom, yes?
With the, with the school counselors?
Yes, at our high schools, there were assemblies, middle school.
Assemblies.
Assemblies. So all, all three of our elementary, middle, and high school did some type of assembly to say we will not tolerate threats. And Triple did as well.
We did.
Yeah.
And Dr. Shepherd, fine, correct. We're going, as a school board, going to review our relationship with sheriff's office at our next meeting to make sure that we take our front-end piece and make sure it's adequate in a greater degree than the sheriff's, is that correct?
We, we invited them to the October, oh, twenty-second, twenty-third work session.
Work session?
Yes.
And that's to address the concern that if they go to one school, then some of the schools may be left with dogs.
That's, that's part of it, but you know, just to talk about the process from their, their perspective.
Do you need a formal email to invite the chiefs of police from his surrounding panel?
No, I, I'll talk to Sheriff Carter and we'll, we'll figure that out.
Any questions for Dr. Shepherd? Well, the supervisor would be happy to know that the school board's going to continue with four more action items.
I got to turn on me. I'll just, I'll turn on me.
You don't want to say.
We give the opportunities, we're, on behalf of the board, we appreciate you all, top of town. We're very, we're, we need to work together, and we've got the calendar ahead, we're going to work through the task. So thank you all here for, hopefully, for.
It is.
Yes, thank you.
Glad I got to end it with you all.
Don't get, no, not though.
No, no. Nope, it's just all in its own.
So I'm going to take the, the area in the boost to call for a ten-minute.
Okay. Okay.
Before we do the drink.
Should consider if there is something that is a legitimate educational need for a phone, that maybe this is something that we can carve out, an exception for a teacher that needs a phone for that. And again, I don't even know. It may be that nothing really needs it, but I can think of maybe there's a program that uses a cell phone to do a diagnostic. I don't know. Merciful, maybe? Any of their...
Not much, a little bit. We do some digital portfolios here where kids will take a picture with their phone, upload it to their Google Drive, and then they put it away, but that's...
Texted.
There's some small nuanced things that happen occasionally where it is used for instructional purposes.
Right, so that's what I was thinking. I mean, if there's something that we need to carve out, an exception for that, and then have the teacher actually request from the principal that there's going to be a need for that to be used for legitimate academic use, that at least we leave that as an option. But I was just kind of figuring about, because I wasn't sure if we needed it or not.
It's that with calculator?
That would be the next thing is that you... Yeah, and that's what I'm saying. Doesn't say no, not for that. It would have to be something very specific, like what you just said, like taking a picture to upload, or maybe there's a diagnostic, like you said, maybe a nursing program that needs to learn how to do a diagnostic program. Something very specific that we can carve out, like separate sessions, pressing for that. But that's just an idea.
We'll leave that. For Todd and the CTE folks, leave it out for when...
I would, um, Governor's School has also mentioned that occasionally they'd use a cell phone if they were doing something in the field, some kind of research or something like that, that they use cell phones.
I think that'd be fine, but he would be that the teacher would have to request that from the principal, and then have the principal then allow that, and we can see how it goes. If it becomes abused, then...
Well, I like your point, and I think that we probably should look for those carve-outs. I know we all are concerned about this, there's driving this and other, and it's kind of tech stuff, and I know that Mike and others have mentioned, you know, when events are canceled and so forth. So, we know there are carve-outs we want to address. I think the more specific we can make them, the better off we are can address those. So, I think that's all. Any other comments on this?
I'd just like to just remind folks that this thing is used by, or something like that, I mean, something like that, and schools have operated long before with things such exchanges to practice, whether it's an announcement over the intercom or whatever. And we used to talk to each other during gym, I mean, during lunches, and at Stralsburg, we'd walk the hallways up the stairs, down the stairs, and, you know, we'd find things to do. Sometimes in the name of convenience of what we got used to, what we've lost in the process, and what we're losing education-wise, kids not being able to talk to each other, you know, without, you know, Snapchat and all the other things, to weigh the pros and cons of making it work. I mean, I know it sounds daunting to give up your phone. I mean, it's hard for me, so, but in the long run, I think that if we got through the hard times, you know, the stuff is going to be inconvenient in the first, you'd see the rewards generally.
Any other kind of questions?
All the information I've got kind of goes in line with what Dr. Heingardner has found out, I mean, talking to parents, admin. The big thing is if we could just let them have their lunch that way. From the admin and the teacher's perspective, it keeps order in the cafeteria. I know my son, he probably could have gotten into his IEP, but he just graduated from the Hichwings and Special Ed, they prefer to play games and converse that way over lunch. My youngest being in sports, I like the fact that I'm in DC or Maryland, I know if a game's been canceled or rescheduled, I can stay late at work that day. It frees up more availability for work. So, I mean, I think we need to look at that. I see Randy's point, too. I'd like to see the kids conversing more and not being on their cell phone. But I think if we go from where we're at now to nothing at all, that's where we're going to see the largest incident of cell phones being taken away and stuff like that. I like being able to be contacted by coaches, teachers, through the window and throughout the day, when changes are made.
My concern is, you think about lunch at the high school level, you have two gyms, you have a cafeteria, so how will there be enough people to enforce it at lunch? Because you've got three or four staff members on lunch duty in the cafeteria, you have maybe one person watching the whole gym. That, to me, that's going to be a challenge, trying to catch the kids up in the corner playing on their phone, but then someone else is being told they can't be on it. So, I don't know if we will have, and maybe part of the impl- implant- implementation, trying to see how it, if we can do it, but that's just kind of where I'm at. And also, you're really flipping a switch in the sense that you can't have it the whole day, morning, that you can have it, and then do we really expect it's going to be easy to put the phone back away?
Well, I mean, you bring up a big point. How many of those cafeteria workers know which kids in the cafeteria have IEPs?
Yeah.
That are allowed to be on their phones? So, who do they enforce and who do they not enforce? You do bring up a valid point.
I think the, um, I think, no matter what the best policy is, there'll be some unethical and unethical standards. I do think that the staff can probably give us some ideas of what any administrators can do in some of these circumstances, probably should do for them during the debate, or the discussion that happens. I would, um, one thing that I found, one of the things that I felt was useful in the Army with summer, when people deviated from a regulation or from a doctorate, it was acceptable if it was done for a cogent reason. And if somebody suddenly felt that they were a threat for something and wanted to call mom or something, it was something that was real, and not something just call your girlfriend and make sure she's going to meet you in the Walmart, then, you know, when a student gives a rationale that kind of meets the grin and giggles test, we're a lot less than a little bit of it. Not to mean or say that that would be something you can drive a truck through, because administrative teachers aren't stupid. You can kind of figure out when you're being game-wise. And so, I think a little common sense here in terms of not being, you know, autocratic so that every violation is, you know, off your head, or whatever, that you just look the other way, because it's easy not to see somebody at lunch. And those things generally try and fall into place, because they need good management. But a little common sense with good management would go around, sort of, yeah.
So, can I vote on it at the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. So, I just wanted to kind of give some, if anybody's interested in arguing, you guys all have this. One of them is a press release from the Virginia Department of Education, and it kind of talks about how they like all the, because we're not doing the executive order from Governor Yonkin, and how they want every school to have already a policy in place by January 1st. And the other one is an article that I found on when smartphones get smarter, do they get dumber? And if anybody else wants a copy of this, I have it show ones here. But one thing that I wanted to kind of remind people, and it kind of builds up on what Randy said, is we need to think about why we're doing this. And we know that we, as a society, have gotten really used to having the convenience of a phone, but what I would like for people to do is to look at how bad it has been for our children, and not just our society in general, but especially our children. And what we see is, and Governor Yonkin's wife just had the fireside chat with Jeff and Mike, who had wrote about the anxious generation, and I would invite people to read that, or there's actually a certain YouTube where he's giving interviews on this. And also the book, Digital Cocaine by Brad Holson. And one of the things that they both point out is how the mental health crisis in kids coincides with the time when they started using phones. And he actually goes through all this information on how, you know, they did all the studies on the mental health of kids up through 2010, and it was pretty much the same for decades. Then all of a sudden, they introduce the smartphones, and the mental health, anxiety, depression, and self-harm just go through the roof. And the ones that were affected, the most were the girls, and for the girls, it was more than double. This is when you started having a lot more suicides, this is when you start having a lot more bullying, this is when you start having a lot more problems in society. And it goes to not just the content of what's in the phone. So, a lot of people are saying, well, it's just to make a phone call, it's just, it's not just the content of what's in the phone or what they're accessing on the internet or social media, it has to do with the science behind having that device, and the notifications, and how it affects the brain, how it wires the brain, how everything about the childhood is kind of, and he calls it the great rewiring of the childhood, because it really does rewire the brain. So, you know, some of that is in here, some of that is in that anxious generation. So, I really invite everybody to look into that, because when I'm looking at this, I'm not looking at it just in terms of what's the content of that, but how is it affecting our kids and our learning. And then the flip side, what we see with a lot of the cell phone bans is they're driven by teachers, because the teachers are the ones who are saying, you know, we're having more time with the kids and not having the same attention span, we see a lot more ADHD symptoms, we see a lot of other similar problems, which makes it harder for the teachers to be able to teach. So, there's so many factors, and I have a long list of things which I'll discuss when we actually have a discussion at the next meeting. But anybody who wants my information, those are sources that I would strongly recommend that they look at, just so you can see what it is that the problem really is, with regards to cell phones, smartphones, iPads, all that.
I, uh, I downloaded the fireside chat, Suzanne Yonkin, and I'll shoot it there at the conference. It's a good listen, as I said, to see.
And that's the author of that book, Anxious Generation.
Yeah, yeah. Let's make some... Okay. Any other things?
Yeah, can I mention one thing to your point a little bit on common sense, but it may help to add this statement under the emergency section, something like, "Staff may authorize student use of cell phones during a school emergency."
Sure.
I think it might help some people feel better about students being able to use that, even though I absolutely think that would be okay.
Well, let me ask you this, though. I mean, the, do we want things jammed up because, you know, because they have feet on their toes on their phones?
That's a good point. That's right.
You know, a lot of things get, you know, I guess my issue is, if your kid is at school when we are on a lockdown, if something happens, you're not getting in to any of our schools.
Right.
You're not retrieving your kid. And if something's happened, sadly, there's not going to be anything that you can do about it. They're in the safest place that they can be with law enforcement there. We don't want everybody shoved in a closet, calling mom, and sitting more panic on the outside.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that one.
So, you know, it's a false sense of security, because there's nothing we can do. And you don't want to jam up the progress and what's going on with those on the outside.
Yeah.
You know, just to your, just like to you, you know, we'd still notify you, but, you know, the coach could tell the athletic director, hey, send this out, and remind that we don't have to have, your son doesn't have to do it, we can do it. You know, the whole, a lot of, there should be some separation between our administrators, our faculties, our staff becoming real convenient with our students as well. You know, there used to be a time when you talked to a student, you called the parents, you sure didn't call them directly. And that has, we've seen a shift in our, you know, in things there as well, that we, you know, not saying that everybody's got ill intent, but it would be misinformation to think that it hasn't happened or it won't happen. So, you know, parents are still in charge, but we want to kind of watch jamming up the worst in an emergency situation as well.
To your point, one of our constituents in Stralsburg has a fourth grader right now. She was in second grade when we had law enforcement going through school with weapons drawn. That student today will not go to school without a cell phone. Granted, it's in her book bag, it's not there for her to use, but if we ever went into that again, the, the idea that she's got it in case she feels the need to contact mom and dad, I can tell you, two years ago when that happened, I was sitting at the ram in Stralsburg waiting to pick up my son Logan, and of all my kids that I didn't think would freak out, he started freaking out, and he was texting me. And thankfully, I had been on social media, so I saw this was a craze throughout the state, it wasn't just here. I was able to calm him down a little bit. Law enforcement works off rate, it doesn't work off cellphone. So, for a kid to be able to text back and forth with their parents, I don't see this jamming up or whatever, but I see the calming of their nerves, it shouldn't be a school function.
Well, what I'm saying is, like, I think that that very instance, when we tried to serve it out, that there was a lockdown and things happening, some of those messages didn't get out to parents, because, I mean, it wasn't from law enforcement, it was from the school notifying people. And we get those messages through text and through cell signal and phones, and some of those didn't go out until way later.
Let me suggest, this is a great debate topic.
Yeah.
It'll probably come up, I mean, and, but I think we have to find next week's one.
Yeah.
Where students are discouraged to the point of being disciplined if they violate this policy, because, wow, the more people do that, the more chaos is going to be created, and the more poker factor is going to be raised. So, all I want to do is have an escape valve for that, like, student who does something inadvertent that doesn't order malicious, but not to leave a gate wide enough for a man truck. So, let's try to find it. Okay? All right, anything else, Dr. Heingardner?
Yes, sir.
Okay. There is 6.2, a revised resolution on agent, deputy agent for examining and approving payment claims. Dr. Shepherd, thank you for bringing this to our attention. The school board in its fashion has lightning-fast reacted to your recommendation, and I'll take a very quick action.
So, two members currently serving in this capacity are Calcutta, as the agent, Randy Rutz as the deputy agent. This is Randy Rutz's last meeting, we will miss her, so we need to appoint another, the school board needs to appoint another deputy agent to review bills.
So, do I hear a motion?
I will say that I've spoken with Gloria, and I will be recommending Gloria for the decision. I gave her the description, and she kind of likes, she'll be ready for it, good for it, so, that'll be 7.2.
Excellent. Okay, so that was the explanation summary before you... Thank you. So, we are on 7.1, which is the resolution for vacant District 5's school board member seat. Before we, yeah, um, Dr. Shepherd, do you want to do the explanation on this, or do you want me to have it?
I would, and I have a little additional information to add, so, I'm so sorry. But at the September 12th school board meeting, Ms. Rutz, District 5 school board member, announced her resignation from the board effective October 1st. The remaining members of the board may appoint an individual to fill the vacancy within 45 days, which will be November 15th. Attached to this agenda item is a proposed timeline, an advertisement to invite qualified voters of District 5 and Shenandoah County who may be interested in seeking an appointment for the upcoming vacancy to apply. Ms. Rutz emailed us, me, recently, today maybe, maybe over the weekend, but asked if we had a form for signatures. And we put together a draft form, and we can attach it to this agenda item if you guys are okay with that. And then we also put together a quick little application, we did this just today, so that's why you're getting it, sort of like, we put together a little bit of an application, and it follows the election for candidates who are seeking election. We just modified it a bit for this situation, so, but thought these would be good forms for anyone who is seeking to apply for this vacant position to fill out. This is also part of the board of the, it would be for, so, if I was in District 5 and I wanted to apply for Randy Rutz's seat, then I would fill out this form, and then I would have 25 signatures from people in District 5 to sign that they support, or, you know, that they acknowledge that you're...
Do they give that to us, or do they give it to the board?
So, they would give it to the clerk of the...
For us, not the board.
This is, this is our draft using their forms, but that's not really what the board wants. Within House.
Yes.
Is the registrar for Shenandoah County going to go through the list of signatures to make sure they are registered, or...
She doesn't have anything to do with this, but Ms. Jett and I talked about it earlier today, and one of the things, if, so, in the timeline, there's a time for you guys to unselect applicants, and if you want us to go through those applicants, signatures, we'll be happy to do so. We'll get a list from the registrar and be happy to go through those signatures. I don't, if we have 200 people apply, I don't necessarily want to spend my time going through those signatures. If we have 10 people apply, we would be happy to do that. But I think if you're going to pick two or three or four people to interview, I think that's the time that we would go through the signatures and verify.
Maybe I'll leave it to the registrar, right?
But the registrar really doesn't have anything to do with this process.
Now, this is all in, this is all in House, and it's not, it's not outlined how you do it. You have to have the 25 signatures.
No, it's, the law is very vague.
So, we're going to send out a, if you will, an advertisement for someone to do a letter of interest. Now, we don't have, do we have anything to that effect yet?
We're not requiring, we're not requiring this form, but we are requiring 25 signatures, I mean, in what we put together.
No, but are we not requesting, asking, yeah, requesting a letter of, a letter of interest?
We are. A letter of interest, less than 500 words, and that's part of the resolution. So, if you pull up the resolution that's attached to this agenda item, it will say that...
Okay, so that was my question. So, I see it electronically, but we just don't have our copy for it. Okay, so, so, we want to draw up a, an advertisement schedule for getting this out based on the timeframe that's provided where?
Right, so the timeline and the advertisement are attachments to this. These are, the two that I printed were just new, new today.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right, so, so we do have... I don't know if you're here. Yeah, I don't, are you? So, tell us that. So, okay, so we do have, we do have the timeline, and we do have the requirements, so, in the advertisement that goes out, that timeline, that explanation, the requirements for the letter of interest, and the signature, the signature form here. And this, we're just required to make sure that basically they have met the requirements that it takes to...
Yes. So, let me saw that view. What is it all going?
So, okay, let me go through the timeline really quickly. So, the advertisement will go out October 1st through the 14th, saying that we are seeking appointment for the vacant, people interested in seeking appointment for the vacant District 5 school board member seat to send a letter of interest, not to exceed 500 words, and 25 signatures from qualified voters of District 5 to the Shenandoah County clerk of the school board. And then the deadline for receiving those letters of interest will be on October the 18th. October the 21st, which is a Monday, will be a meeting, a special, that's our work session, where we'll review, you guys will review applications, applicants for the District 5 seat, and then October 28th is a special call meeting where we will interview the candidates for District 5. November the 4th will be a special call meeting where the school board will appoint an interim school board member for District 5.
Now, we have 45 days from October 1st, so we have to do October 15th, November 15th to complete the process. And the goal that we picked here is to be completed by November 4th, so if there's any slippage, we're still, we're still going to have it made down.
Your board just had tons and tons of applicants coming up.
And notice that 200, I was saying maybe two.
So, October 18th, these are due as well as the letter of interest, correct?
That's correct, yes. October the 18th is when the letter of interest and the 25 signatures are due, and it would be nice if they would fill out the other form that we have, that will attach to this agenda item, just saying that they are a citizen of the United States, or at least 18, or will be on the date of the appointment, that they're a resident of the Commonwealth for a year, and they reside in the District 5, so, you know, all of those questions that...
That we all have to do.
Yes.
Because 45 days, is that something legal? That's a...
It is, it is. It's, it's code section 24 dot 2 dash 228.
I think you worked it.
I have it right here.
All right. First of all, I want to thank Superintendent for getting this packet together in such short order. I love the timeline, it's doable, it's something you can stay on track with. I need to entertain a motion to accept this, the resolution.
I move to approve the resolution to build, to fill the vacant District 5 school board member seat, and to adopt the proposed calendar outlining the activities and timeline required by the school board to complete the appointment process.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Ritter. Thank you. This is Ross. So, we have a, so, so we have our motion and second. Is there any discussion? If not, I'm going to call for the question. Those in favor of this country's resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I can reflect that it is a unanimous decision. My page is 2, now we'll get to 72. So, the information we talked about earlier on naming an agent, and deputy agent for examining and proving the payment of claims is before us, is there a motion? Do you have a...
I move to appoint Gloria Carlenio as the deputy agent to examine and prove approved this board's bills and payroll due to Ms. Rutz resigning from the school board effective October 1, 2024.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ritter. Second, Mr. Gertschall's motion. Is there any discussion? None? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unopposed carries unanimous. Thank you. School board, comments? Who wants to begin?
I'll start. It was a tough one. You got me into this.
Don't blame me.
I, I think we joked about this at one time. You were going to get me in and then you were going to leave.
Yeah, well, I might have, if I was this.
Well, I just want to thank you for, thank you for all the advice, the carefultation, the, the help of getting me involved, and thank you for all the positive things you've done, for sharing your time, obviously. I really appreciate it. So, I got.
Actually, first of all, kind of order the cell phone, we're going to be discussing it and voting it on the.
To a certain extent, I think.
It's a regular meeting.
Regular meeting. All right, yeah, I don't have much, Brandy, I know we haven't seen eye to eye in many things, but I want to thank you for your service and everything you've done, and I wish you the best of luck with the board. Are you moving the board or? We're working that way. Okay, well.
Or if you're able among us.
Even if you are just visiting, good luck, Florida's a great place, it's hot, but ooh, I'll kill you if you're. Yeah, this is just to get you ready, I guess. So, thank you.
Well, I'll continue on now. Brandy, we did see you at Allen, thanks. Yeah, I tell you, it's still, it's still a shopper. I hoped I'd call you next day, and I did.
You did.
But I understand, you know, well, there's situations in life, and you have to make decisions, and you have to make the right decisions, you gotta do it correct, I understand. But I, I want to thank you for, I knew I could always, you know, call you and, and get some good advice, and, and I thank you for everything. I was looking forward to getting more advice, but anyway, but I want to thank you for all you've done, and you're always a phone call away, and I really do thank you for, for all you've done, and I wish you the best in whatever you have in front of you in life, and I hope I'll miss you.
Brandy, it's been a good, good ride for us. I know you, Dennis and I came into this together, all very different people, but we've definitely been an asset to the school system. We'll sincerely miss working with you. Definitely have looked up to you on a lot of different things and have learned a lot from you. I think if you look at what we've done and what we continue to do, I think we've done a lot of good things to this point. You know, we've listened to the community, and although we didn't bring Dr. Shepherd in, we extended her stay here, which I'd like to take, we'd like to take a little bit of credit for, but you've been a very good school board member, you've done a lot of research, you've put a lot of time in, you've been a joy to work with, and we will really miss having you here, and we'll stay in touch.
You probably don't remember the first time we met, but nobody in this room will believe this story.
Need some microphone.
So, Marty Helsley and Brad Pollak, they're trying to find people to run conservatives to run for state board, and those two gentlemen hosted a meeting, and it was coming a call out for this, and you were there, and then, Maddie Gilbert was there, I think there was one or two other, other activists in the community that were there. But I, I remember that when we spoke, this lady has to be there, and she's in the community there, yes. But it was, it was actually, then we wound up being opponents.
Yeah.
But I have, I absolutely enjoyed working with you so much, and we, we've had our half-hour, forty-five-minute, hour-long discussions, and I want to tell you, every time I talk to you, I've learned something. Funny, I've learned something. You've always given me a different point of view to consider, and you've always had some, some, some points I just didn't think of, and you made me smarter about that, and you did it in a nonpartisan way, you called out anybody you felt was wrong, you had a lot of courage in doing that, in my perspective, you're a guy, I, and the people are cliche about us making truth of power, but that's what you do, yeah, that's, that's a thing that I feel the most professional about you. So, I, I know you'll, you'll do well wherever you go, whatever you do, and I'll, I'll always treasure our, our time together, you've been a true professional, and, and. And yet, we, when you can trust the guy you're from without knowing that he's there or what he's supposed to do, but you know he'll be there, that's, that's, that's one thing that I'll, I'll appreciate. Most of my life is I've gone around doing missions around the world, not religious missions, some of it, but, um, military missions, I've had a, I've collected other books, I love other books, beautiful, seem to me, they will speak of things, and we don't write about anymore, guilt agents, I love guilt stuff, but I collect them now, I don't know what to do with them, but, and so, I'm finding folks who I think are worthy of having these sort of times, and I'd love to review one of these. I'm just looking for something that would fit, this one's called Wit and Humor, but there you go. This was written in eighteen forty-seven, I just went out.
Your next board.
So, I'm going to just, it has nothing to do with us, but it's just, it's just, it's called A Tale of the Trumpet, and it was written by the English poet, in eighteen forty-four. Of all old men, old women hard of hearing, the deafest chore was Dame Eleanor's hearing. On her head is true, two flasks that grew that served for a pair of gold rings to go through, but for any purpose of years in a parlour, they heard no more than years of I feel that kind of wig would kind of work with me. So, anyway, thank you for a challenging and rewarding two and a half years, and I wish you well, we pray for you, we need you to be, pray for us as we continue. Thanks.
Thank you. Wow. So, you know, it would have suited me just to have come to this meeting, resigned then, and then hit it out the door, because I, I hate goodbyes, I really do, but maybe this will be a see you, see you don't. You all have been a pleasure, and I think that one of the biggest things about serving is the fact that I've gotten to know you all in a different light. You know, it's real easy when you read Treves, Treves journalism, and you form an opinion, and you think, okay, I know what I'm doing here, I, I know more than they do, and then you get in here and you work with a bunch of professionals like you, and you are humbled really, really quickly. You know, we discussed the other day about how many years Jennifer Bracker has in this school system, and every time that Chad Hensley gets up and gives a presentation, I'm always amazed at what you, how you vision things, and Linda, you always come to the table with optimism, and you have one of the toughest jobs that we have, and you are on the most far and most interesting place on the face of the earth that you could be in to live Doug, you're always kind of quiet, and, you know, again, forgive me for not recognizing you out of, out of your element in lows, and you were gracious, and you have always, every time that I have locked myself out of my computer, you were always gracious enough, and I don't know what password number I'm on, but, you know. Jen, you and I have had lots of conversations, and I think you're awesome, and I know you have a tough job ahead fixing what's been done in the past, and I appreciate the hard work that you're doing. Mr. Lynn, I think you're, where are you supposed to be? I mean, we say goodbye to somebody that we love, but it's a new day, and I think that you are the person to be here, so, I, I don't have any doubt that we're leaving, I'll leave them in a bit of fun. Dave has done a fabulous job taking the backs and forth and, and just doing all the behind-the-scenes stuff that nobody really knows that he does, and he makes things run really well, and he's gracious about it, and, you know, when I have to renew policies, and I appreciate not having to look at seventy-five pages the night before. You create it real easy, and you're an asset to Shenandoah County. I told you when I first met you, that very first meeting, you had no idea what you were in for, and I, in early shock, you're still here to me. I'll give you this, I think that you're probably one of the world's most, the best closet poker player that there ever is, because I can look over at you sometimes during a meeting, and unless you're really tired, you show nothing, and I'm like, dang. But your leadership has shown, you have been a pleasure, you have turned things around, and I think you will still, when you decide for Green or Bashers or whatever, you've really got a big mark on the shoulder of you, and I thank you for your service. Yeah, you took the bait, you took it, and you come right on in, watch stuff, it's. Yep.
I remember one statement you said, oh, it's only one, one meeting at most, and I'm looking at a clock now.
I'm glad you're here. Roya, it's never been one of you lying about that, but you will be an asset, and you put time, and you put effort into this, and that is something that is essential. Tom, you're a class act, and I told you that the other day, and I'm glad that you're, oh, I shouldn't have looked at you, we'll get the money for it, it's okay, I'm sorry. Paul, I can tell you, and I have in the last two and a half years, to be able to look up at you during a meeting, and see a niggle, or see something that I'm like, like, Paul, thank you, I've tried to stay focused here.
Can I play poker with my.
You should never play poker, you should never, ever play poker. But you have grown, and I told your mama just a couple of months ago that I was just as proud of you as if you were my own, and to watch you, you're what we should model Shenandoah County's newest, newest graduate, you're smart, you're kind, you have, you know, the vote for the name change, you showed courage, and not everybody, you know, would have done that, equal twice your age. And it wasn't popular, but you followed, but you watched, you showed that, that's good, so, I'm glad to have you, friend, and I'm glad that we worked through your together. Mr. Bartlett, I didn't have to tell you all of a sudden, you are my, a compliment to my little red.
I don't see, you should, I don't have written that.
You should, it might just go into a book of wit or something like that, or, you know, we work well together, and you're right, I, I was, I was full of your opponent. I'm so grateful that it didn't work out that way, and I appreciate your wisdom, I appreciate watching you be diplomatic, which is something that I struggle with, I mean, it just worked off, and I try to keep it in, but it doesn't always work, so, you're, you're a gentleman in, in all aspects, and I, I, I've just had a pleasure serving with you, you've made it, you've made it fun. It's a belated that, the drill sergeant, and. Cheryl, I still think that there should be an open-ended contract with knowing and paying for you, and for this program, and some, we, we're still director, but you keep this crazy place still, and it's not enough, whatever it is for paying, yeah, thank you for all you do. In first school? I'm no issue, I'm just looking across the room and seeing you. Huh? I'm not saying, but that, I think you're welcome.
You know, state boundaries don't mean that in the beginning, so, let us know, I'm sure you'll have some opinions, I'm guessing.
Hardly, hardly, but, you know, when I drive it back and forth, there's fourteen hours of nothing to do, I can bum my stuff all the time.
All right. I have a, we're not using our materials already tonight, this is our work session, so, why don't I just say, it's been great to be with you, and we've got a lot more to do in October, we're not out of the game yet, we're not hurting, the press is going to carry on. We are adjourned at nine fifty-seven.